Recording in progress.
Hello, everybody. Welcome to today's council meeting. It's Tuesday, February eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-five. We're going to call the movement into order and ask Clementine to do a work on sharing our thoughts with the public.
Councilmember Barber. President, Councilmember Garcia.
Here.
Councilmember Rash here, Councilmember Smith.
Present.
Mayor Williamson.
Good.
And information on participating in this meeting today and providing public comments, including remotely by Zoom or telephone, is available on the agenda, which is online at monterey.gov/Agendas. Remote commenters, you will be muted until it is your turn to speak and a timer will be shown on the screen. If you're connected on Zoom, the timer is accurate with no delay. In-person attendees, please keep your phones and devices muted to prevent audio interference with our meeting, and thank you for participating in your city government.
Thank you, Clementine. And with that, we're going to do pledge of allegiance, and I'm going to ask Dr. Barber to kick us off here.
All right, ready to begin. Our pledge of allegiance is to the flag, the series of the two three colors which stands one.
All right, thank you, Dr. Barber. And with that, we'll go to our consent. I don't have any items that are desired to be pulled. Anybody in the council wish to pull anything? All right, with that, we'll open up to the public. This is an opportunity for public to provide comments on consent items, or if you desire to pull something from the consent agenda. So I'll share with folks. I know there might be some folks that haven't come to a council meeting recently. What we do for public comment, and this is new for all public comment periods, is we ask people to identify themselves at the beginning of the public comment period. Once we identify those folks, we'll close that opportunity off, so nobody else will be able to speak other than those folks that identify themselves at the beginning, and then we'll allow, we'll take those public comments. So I'm going to start online for folks to use a raise hand function on Zoom. If you wish to pull anything or have any public comment on our consent items, while folks are navigating to the the raise hand function on Zoom, I'll check in the chamber. Anybody in the chamber wishes to speak on anything on their consent agenda? So I'll ask you to stand by one second. Are you wanting to speak on a consent agenda, sir?
Did you say something not on the agenda?
Consent agenda.
Okay.
Anybody else? Okay, so I'm not seeing anybody in the chamber, so I'll go back on Zoom and do a countdown for folks to use the raise hand function to five, four, three, two, one, and we have nobody on Zoom, so bring it back to the council for motion deliberation.
Uh, move to approve the consent agenda as is.
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor? I, any opposed? Motion passes unanimously, and I apologize, I skipped over the general public comment, so we'll now go to general public comment. So this is for items that aren't on today's agenda. So again, I will check with folks on Zoom to use the raise hand function. While folks are navigating their way there, I'll check with folks in the chamber. If you could identify yourself by either standing up to the left of the podium or raise your hand if you would like to remain seated. So I'll give folks a second to this is for items that are not on today's agenda. Yeah, so this is not the firearm issue. This is just no, nothing that's on the agenda. This is a time to speak for general public comment. So I see four folks. I'll check, I see, I see five folks. Anybody else in the chamber? Okay, so we have these five folks in the chamber. I'm going to cut it off there, and then I'll do a countdown for Zoom to five, four, three, two, one, and we have two on Zoom, so we're going to keep it to two minutes, and we'll go ahead and start in the chamber.
March first, what the hell's going on here? March first rally, Last Chance California, seen website lennemurdertruth.com. Now, the last time I was here, I told you about my face being emblazoned in the landscape of the state of Washington, so big you can see it from space. This is what it looks like, five hundred miles tall. When I was mugshot at the holding the billboard in San Francisco. I'm holding the rally, and I even ran some ads. We got to expose this murderer, Stephen King. You'll be listening to KCO, you'll hear these ads. Please attend my March first rally. Steve Lightfoot of lennemurdertruth.com here reminding you that March first, my birthday, is your last chance, California. To make a show of support throughout this evidence before I am forced to move to Utah to break it there. That's March first, a Saturday in downtown Monterey on Alvarado Street, twelve o'clock noon. The first time to show get my magazine for starting my club. If you show, just stand by my band immediately with or without a crowd and stay good to attract others, please. I understand you want to dismiss the possibility that it is really Stephen King, not Chapman getting John Lennon's last autograph. Makes some sick trick on all of you. On its face, it's like saying a five hundred mile tall image of my nineteen eighty-seven mug shop, the holding the billboard is emblazoned in the landscape of Washington State, so big it's visible from space. And let, I dare you to examine the satellite image of the US at night on the television show PD Live Police Patrol. Hit your freeze button, you'll be the judge. America will not believe you if you try to say I never had evidence. Once they see my website, you all are murdered. Just show up, people. The evidence is explosive. Be there. That's March first, Saturday, downtown Monterey, Alvarado Street, twelve noon. Thank you.
Uh, Mayor, I was going to pull, I didn't realize it on the consent agenda because the way it's written on the contend, the agenda doesn't say anything about the, uh, the fines for, um, violation of the, um, uh, rental ordinance. So it wasn't put into the consent agenda. So I assumed this was going to be on, on the regular agenda, and it's not. And I think you should, uh, give us the opportunity to talk about that. Uh, again, because the way it's described in the consent agenda doesn't match what they're adding to it regarding, um, increases in fines. It didn't, it didn't say that the rental registry would be part of the fine which got, so I think it was a little bit, um, disingenuous.
Hi, uh, council. Really appreciate the, uh, opportunity to, uh, to speak to you. I'm Kent Glensor. I live here at nine forty-one Wainwright Street, and some of you on the council know that I wear a number of hats. I'm here with a different hat tonight. Uh, I wanted to let you know that, uh, we've established a new advocacy group here. It's, uh, YMB Monterey Peninsula. Yes, in my backyard, Monterey Peninsula, we're a registered five oh one C four that's associated with California YMB and also the National uh, YMB. As a local affiliate, our main goal is to help assure that the Reno goals are met. That's our one and only reason for establishing this. We've got eighty people right now. We're just beginning. We're just beginning, but our primary focus is making Reno a real thing, which I think you all share that, uh, visitor, uh, vision. Um, we, we aim to collaborate with other organizations here. Um, and, uh, that's all I wanted to say, and you're going to hear more from us, so I really appreciate the opportunity. Thank you.
Good afternoon, council members. My name is Julie Ingle. I live up on skyline, or below skyline on, um, Dry Creek. And the reason I'm here today is because of concerns that I and people in my neighborhood have um, with the potential for wildfire in our community. One of the things that, um, bothers me is that while about ninety percent of all fires are human caused, whenever we suffer a wildfire or there's a huge one in California, people tend to look at the fastest way to save themselves is to take pretty drastic action when it comes to our landscaped areas and our forested areas. Um, and that can have, um, you know, counter effects that are worse than doing nothing. Because if you take down too much of your natural habitat, you leave it open for, um, invasive weeds that are actually more flammable than what you have in the first place. So to me, what we really need to begin doing is managing our open spaces better. I was really happy to see that on the twenty-seventh, there is going to be this, um, um, open house at the conference center to deal with wildfire issues. One of the things that discouraged me, though, is that I don't see any environmental organizations, um, included in, you know, the, the panelists. The Sierra Club isn't there. California Native Plant Society isn't there. Um, it, I, it, it worries me that we are, um, not taking, um, a better approach and more holistic approach to solving our problem. Thank you.
Good afternoon, City Council. My name is Steve Regnini. I'm a resident of the city of Monterey, and I'm here to speak on a consent agenda item, but, uh, while I was here, I thought I would, uh, address the council on another item. I want to praise the council and the city staff specifically. As you know, we just had a major storm, and, uh, we had a tree, uh, across the street from where we lived that was about forty-five degrees, and it was ready to fall. So I gave, uh, forestry department a call. They were out and out, uh, the neighborhood an hour later, uh, an hour after that, they were already working on taking down the tree. The tree was down within about three hours, which saved, uh, a potential power line, power line going out. So I really appreciate the quick responsiveness. The very next day, because of the nature of the storm, we had a large waterspout coming out of a main sewer manhole. Once again, I called Public Works. Within an hour, they were back. So I just wanted to thank the city, uh, for your responsiveness. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Regnini. All right, with that, we'll go to our callers on Zoom.
Calling in as telephone caller with the last three digits, four, three, six. You will need to unmute yourself by dialing star six. Go ahead.
Okay, so, um, my name is Eloise Shim, and, um, I'm a Salinas resident, but I have lived in Monterey before. And I want to make the comment because I, I'm going to comment about the the gun thing, the gun store in Monterey later. But what I want to do now is I want to talk about a year ago, I made a comment because, um, the city council had up for, um, consideration an additional cannabis thing going on, and, um, the law enforcement told them they didn't think they should put a pause on adding the cannabis store in Monterey because they said it could bring, um, fentanyl and other kinds of hard drugs to Monterey, but the council, um, just said, we don't think that's going to be a problem. Well, it is a problem because they just found about a couple of weeks ago, they found, um, some young guy named Johnny something with fentanyl and cocaine and all kinds of drugs. So it is a problem. And I think that the city council should listen more to the residents and to law enforcement rather than putting the city at risk with their liberal ideas. They should listen more to the, to the experts and the authority because you did, in fact, when you said it wasn't a problem, it was a problem. So that's what I have to comment about that, but I'm going to comment about the gun store.
All right, our next, uh, speaker is a telephone caller with the last three digits, nine, zero, two.
Good afternoon. My name is Nina Beatty. First, Mayor Williamson, you are in the group Mayors for Peace, and I request that you write to our congressional reps to sponsor H R ten, two, one, eight, that prohibits Army tactical missiles to Ukraine and support President Trump's statements to back down nuclear tensions. Second, the Monterey Bay Aquarium is doing high decibel geophysical surveys in Monterey Bay with Saturn V rocket decibel levels that will maim and kill sea life. I request the city contact the Monterey Bay Aquarium and tell them to halt these surveys and also support legislation stopping these surveys. OSHA's maximum for humans is a hundred and ten decibels for a half hour. This equipment blasts for eight hours. Decibels are logarithmic. The aquarium's a hundred and ninety-one decibels is one billion times higher than OSHA's limit and is a thousand times higher than military LRAD weapons. Lower decibel levels damage internal organs, rupture membranes, cause embolisms, and cause animals to strand. You don't have to hear decibels for it to harm or kill you. And powerful resonance also damages organs and whole bodies. The aquarium's using this for topographical and geological surveys. This is not in the ocean's best interest. It affects everyone in the water, plankton, krill, fish, seals, and sea lions, otters, fish, crabs, starfish, dolphins, turtles, diving birds, whales, everything. Everyone in the ocean are acutely sensitive, and the ocean's already extremely stressed. It also affects any humans in the water. The hair, the aquarium failed to even provide proper notice and conducted two-day survey near Moss Landing right after the fire. That's the grossest of insensitivity I can think of. Sonar and seismic testing is devastating to the ocean and completely disrupts the ocean environment. Please oppose future surveys and call the aquarium to halt this now. Thank you.
Well, I believe that was it for public comment, so we'll go ahead and close public comment and go to our public appearance item number nine, adopting urgency ordinance pursuant to Government Code Section sixty-five, eight, five, eight, A, to temporarily prohibit the establishment and operation of new firearms and ammunition retail sales businesses in the city. And with that, I'll pass it to Hans for staff presentation.
Mr. Mayor, uh, staff has prepared, uh, the, um, proposal to adopt an urgency ordinance, and our community development director, Ken Cole, will present, uh, our recommendation.
I'm thinking, Mayor and council member, um, as the city manager introduced, we are suggesting that the city council adopt an urgency ordinance to temporarily, temporarily prohibit, um, the establishment and operation of new firearms and ammunition retail sales businesses in the city of Monterey. Just in terms of background, um, I think the council is well aware of there's sort of multiple layers of regulation in terms of firearms. Um, starting out with federal level, um, persons must be licensed by the U.S. Department of Justice Bureau of Alcohol, Tobacco, Firearms, and Explosives to engage in the business of manufacturing, importing, and ordealling in firearms. And there's nine types of firearms licenses that, um, can be obtained. Just briefly, at a state level, um, cities can regulate the retail sales of firearm businesses to the extent that it's not preempted by state law, and so there's specific requirements in state law. At the local level, um, cities, um, can adopt zoning codes to regulate or restrict the establishment or operation of these types of businesses. And, um, it includes everything from your commercial districts all the way to residential districts in your community. One of the interesting, um, facts that you may not be aware of is that sometimes people get confused between the business license process and what's a permitted or maybe a conditionally permitted or prohibited use in our zoning code. It's important to realize the business license ordinance is all establishes a ministerial process, and it doesn't, um, regulate the type of business that can be conducted in the city. It's simply imposed for revenue generating purposes. So there's really two separate, um, tracks for a new business to establish in our community. There's the business license track, which is this ministerial process, and then there's checking with the city planning office on the zoning requirements and what's allowed for each site. Um, I think you, uh, after reading the staff, uh, report, are probably aware now, there are five, um, businesses in Monterey that currently, um, involve firearms in some level. Um, there's the one that was, um, most recently, uh, allowed L and B firearms, and it was established in October of twenty-four in the neighborhood community, um, zoning district. Um, Gallagher Ammunition, looking at September of twenty-four, it's actually in our residential district. J C Firearms and Ammo, um, in our industrial district, Triggered Ammo and Apparel in our planned community district, and Big Five in our planned community district. So what are the reasons to consider an urgency ordinance? This is actually a fairly unique process. Um, cities don't do it that often typically. Um, and it's really, it needs to be an urgent matter. Um, and really looking in Monterey, what we've realized is that an unlimited number of firearm businesses could open and locate almost anywhere in the city without regulation. Our current zoning code treats these facilities as retail establishments only. So there's no zoning regulations that prevent them for locating. And one of the interesting things is if you think back to the previous slide, we've had three businesses open up in, um, a relatively short period in twenty twenty-four. Um, and I think it's important for us all to know that incompatible uses can lead to disputes and quality of life impacts between various properties. Um, and we are recommending that we halt the use until staff can study appropriate buffers from sensitive uses and research other regulations. So what would an urgency ordinance do? Um, it would temporarily prohibit the establishment and operation of new firearm, um, sales businesses. Um, but it wouldn't affect the five businesses that have already either have established or expended substantial funds in order to operate at their location. The, the procedure for adoption of an urgency ordinance is unique. Um, it requires a four-fifths vote. So a fairly high bar. The initial effective date is for forty-five days, and then it can be extended for ten months and fifteen days, and then um, subsequently for a year. So in total, the city could, um, look at about two years with subsequent actions on an urgency ordinance. So what are some of the ideas for a future ordinance? Um, as this issue was brought to our attention, we can research other best practices from other cities. Um, we could require insurance. Um, we could confine operations to specifically commercially zoned areas. Um, we could require that dealers be located away from. We could require that dealers be located away from residential areas, schools, liquor stores, and bars, or any other use that we might think would be incompatible with that proposed use. We also could implement age restrictions. We could restrict anyone under the age of eighteen years from entering or remaining within the premises without being accompanied by their parent or another adult. So our recommendation is, we've really, at the staff level, believe there are the findings there to adopt an urgency ordinance to allow us to have a timeout and to be able to study this issue and then come back with proposed zoning regulations.
Thank you, Kim, for the presentation. Council, any questions at this time?
No.
Please.
Thank you, Kim, for the presentation. Could you, in your knowledge, describe of the five locations that were listed, which ones or how many are walk-in retail locations or would be?
I'm just going to go back to the list. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm going the wrong way. Anyways, it's my understanding that L and B will be a walk-in establishment that you can purchase. Big Five historically has been a place where you can purchase firearms, not the one in the residential neighborhood. And, oh, thank you. I believe J C Firearms and Triggered Ammo and Apparel are also places that you can walk in.
Okay, Councilor Rash.
Thank you for the presentation. You were inferring that a future ordinance, emergency ordinance, could require that gun stores be in commercially zoned areas. They aren't now. They are now. So there are residential ones, but there's one that sells ammunition within a residential area. Okay. All right. I have questions that I think are going to come up from the audience, so I'm going to go into that. So right now, a child can enter a gun store?
There's no local law that prevents that from happening, and as I understand it, you know, they would have to comply with state laws, and I believe they can enter.
Okay. So if we go ahead with an ordinance, that might be something staff could, we could be more restrictive.
Right.
Is there any room for, and I know the answer to this, but I'm struggling with this whole question, is there any room for county preemption? So the county has, as I understand it, a broader overlay required, but we stand alone, right?
We stand alone on our own zoning regulations.
Okay. Are there, are evening hours allowed with gun stores?
Currently, yes.
Okay, so that could be in a future, or you could look at, or not.
Yes, you could look at restricting hours of operation, just as we do with bars and other types of uses.
I'll probably have the opportunity to speak again, but I'm concerned that the question isn't so much the whether we're going to do an urgency ordinance, but what are we going to do about the gun store that's permitted? And it's, it's difficult. So let me just ask a few clarifying questions. In C one neighborhood commercial zoning, a massage parlor is unpermitted. So that means it goes through more of a process to be allowed, or it would never be allowed?
So I'm not looking at the C one regulations right now, so I don't remember what the regulations are?
It's just a U.
Okay. So a U would be for a use permit, so that means it would be permitted subject to a public hearing?
Subject to a public hearing. Okay.
So the way to read our use charts, if the use is not listed on the use chart, then it's prohibited. If it's a U, that means that they can apply for a use permit, and typically, cities place conditions of approval on that use permit to regulate that business in some way. The remaining uses usually have a P, which means permitted by right, no review required.
Okay. All right. So in C one neighborhood commercial, which is where the three oh one Ocean location is, massage parlors are subject to public hearing, a U, a bar is subject to public hearing. That's true in C two as well. Adult businesses are subject to a public hearing. Massage is subject to a public hearing. C three, general commercial, a bar is U, subject to public hearing. Massage, subject to public hearing. There's no mention of adult businesses. So I'm trying in my, in my brain to make sense of this dilemma that we're going to face tonight. But you clarified, or also, on C two, where, where a commercial use is allowed, the language says, if it's a budding on a fronting parcel, a residential parcel, then the zoning of that residential parcel trumps?
I don't believe so.
Says it's the language, a budding or fronting, or on a residential district, the standards of the adjacent district apply, and I'm asking.
I think that's regarding setbacks, not necessarily uses.
Okay.
I'd have to look at the specific section you're referencing.
I'm grappling with all the language. Okay, those are my questions. Thank you for answering them.
Sure.
Okay, and no questions for me at this time. So again, thank you, Kim, for the presentation, and at this time, we'll open it for public comment. So for folks that are on Zoom, I ask you to use the raise hand function, and while you're navigating your way there, I'm going to check in the chamber, and I'm going to ask for folks to sign up, stand up to the left of the podium. And if you, if you prefer to remain seated, feel free to raise your hand. I'll give folks a second to navigate. All right, is there anybody else that's still sitting that would like to speak on this item? So we have three in the second row. Okay. Anybody else in the chamber? So I have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, standing and three seating in the second row. Anybody else? All right, so we'll cut it off in the chamber, and then we'll check online. I'll do a countdown for folks to use a raise hand function to five, four, three, two, one. We have five online. Council, what do you all want to do? Should we keep it at three? Should we go to two? What do you guys want to do?
Three.
Three?
Yeah.
There is eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen. How much time is that? Two and a half? Yeah. Are we going two and a half? It's a good negotiation. Okay, we'll do two and a half. We'll start in the chamber.
Five online.
Mayor, council, my name is Nelson Blake. As you know, I'm a commercial and apartment owner, and I, I've had two gun shops in my career in my, my places, and one was here in Monterey on Houston that was there for probably, I don't know, forty years, and ironically, it never had an incident. Okay? That I, that I would ever mention to. I had another one in Seaside, never had a problem with them. The ATF comes in, they make sure they got bars in the windows. You would be, it would be, you'd be surprised, the security that's required to open a gun shop. And it is right for Americans to have guns. And I stand up as a gun owner and a gun, like, advocate, that we should all have guns. You have a bigger problem with the marijuana and the drug facilities that you're allowing in this city to sell drugs to young people who are out and cause more problems than these gun shops were ever caused. This is, this is way overblown for what it is. These are usually, people that own guns are always responsible with them. They want to make sure they maintain, do all the things they have, they can get ammo there when they go hunting, et cetera, et cetera. And this is just like any other business. I would venture to say there had been more problems with bars and fights and murders at discoteques than there you'll ever find in a gun shop. Because, but because it says gun, you guys are actually having an emergency ordinance about this thing. And so in the last hundred years, a hundred and fifty years of the city of Monterey been around, they've never had a gun ordinance. They've never had a killing at a gun shop. Why are you intervening in something that every American should have a right to, and that's a gun? Thank you for your time.
My name is Donna Betzold. I'm the president of the Oak Grove Neighborhood Association, where three oh one Ocean Avenue is located, where the, this person has been given the license. First, I would like to thank the mayor and the council for responding so quickly, placing item nine on tonight's agenda. I hope the results of your discussion will eventually bring about permanent prohibition. The response in our neighborhood has been overwhelmingly anti-gun shop. I will be following this topic at the council meetings and reporting back to our neighborhood association. Thank you again for all you do.
My name is Ed Albert, and I'm a gun owner, and I'm a lifelong resident. My grandparents still, home is still in Oak Grove, not one, but two. My mom, dad, everybody was born here. I'm not that articulate, so we had a professor for me that works for the Naval Postgraduate School wrote this for me, because I could never do this. Responsible firearms spreading with store in a neighborhood is typically considered one that actively promotes responsible gun ownership, prioritizes customer safety education, maintains a clean and well-managed environment, and actively engages with the community to address concerns about gun violence, often participating in the local initiatives and background checks with strict adherence to local county, state, and federal regulations. Essentially, such a retail store would focus on being a positive influence within the community rather than just selling firearms. Guns are federally regulated, unlike cannabis dispensaries, but are not federally recognized. Recently, cannabis permits have been passed through the city council. These dispensaries deal in large amounts of cash and may be seen as gateways and green lights to our most impressionable population. These dispensaries generally have security either outside prior to entry or immediately inside the door. The practice is in direct response to adherence, interactions with the public at large. A firearm retail store sells a variety of goods that can have an affirmative, affirming effect in the neighborhood, such as FXR, provides a strong emphasis on safety, extensive training, I got to go fast, extensive training for staff, safe handling practices, clear signage regarding safety, community outreach, I guess I only have fifty-one seconds, and it goes on and on and on. The point being, in our Constitution of the United States, we have a Second Amendment. You are infringing on this, shall not be infringed. It's not just at a small level, it's at all levels. I have dealt with gun stores before. You guys don't have regulations even close to what he's going to have to go through with the ATF, the Department of Justice, and everything else. This is a good gun store, and it should stay.
Mr. Albert, if, I know you had additional comments, and this goes for anybody that doesn't get through their comments. If you want, you can provide those to staff, and we can get those submitted in the record.
Yeah.
Okay, we can go to the next speaker. And, and sorry, before we get to our next speaker, we already cut off public comment. So for those that, I, I believe the gentleman here with the, with the glasses is the, is the last person in the chamber that can speak. We already cut off the period for, for additional comments. I apologize for those that, that wish to speak, but we're not able to get to at this time. All right, we'll go ahead.
Yes, my name is Erica Walker. I'm here just because I saw a lot of activity on Nextdoor. I mean, the, the things that are being thrown out there, as Nelson had spoke, I've done property management myself for twenty-six years. I've managed two locations that were gun stores. They never had an incident, not one. I think it's true to what he's talking about. I've been here, and I haven't seen a lot of meetings. I, on a daily basis, have hypodermic needles in our parking lots on our streets. My kids, I had a guy, we had to call three times, who was basically, as far as we were concerned, he was dead in the street. There are much bigger things going on here in Monterey. I can't bring my kids to Dennis Menace Park, it's not safe. The bums sleep through the tunnels at night on the play structure information. I know that the park benches aren't safe, there's drugs, there's things, there's fentanyl out there. So my concern is that there's so much action taking over a business that a gentleman has actually went out and, and went through the process of the business, obtained everything that he was supposed to. He has now put funds into this, and now you guys, because other citizens don't like it, want to take something that he legally did correctly, especially because you're saying it was permitted, it was allowed, he's done everything correctly, now you're wanting to take something back. I think there's much more incidences of violence and drugs and all kinds of other illegal activities that are happening around here in Monterey. You just need to take your kids out. If you walk around with your kids, you might feel a little differently, it's not safe. I go to my car, I've been attacked twice by bums, and, and I called, and they went over and they hid the weapons that I had on paper and video, and at the safe place, and they did nothing to him. And he tried to stab me in my leg, and I have a bad foot, so I couldn't run. So I'm feeling very offended that you guys have taken so much time into this, and you guys are taking the, can't get what people are doing every day on the streets. So I just wanted to leave it at that. I don't even own a gun, but if I wanted one, I'd want to be able to buy it, I'd want to be able to go to somewhere where we could. There were never any incidences before, and this city was literally founded with people that had, had guns. They've always been here, they aren't doing anything wrong. What we really have in this, in this neighborhood is a drug problem.
Please.
Hi, my name is Susanna Whitpen. Thank you for letting me be here. The first thing I wanted to say was I'm a little bit confused about the zoning. I understand where the building is, the three oh two Ocean, which I live in that neighborhood. I'm alive, you know, Royal Oaks, Oak Grove neighborhood myself. It looked like it is a mixed-use building, and I feel like I would have liked to see this whole issue been presented to the public before a permit or license was, you know, approved, because I think it wasn't completely researched properly. So my point is this, and I want to be clear, I'm not against a person owning a gun. I think the right to bear arms is, you know, valid in this country. What I do think is that this was a terrible decision for our community in the location that it is. It's near the Teddy Bear preschool, it's within the walking distance of two liquor stores. Statistics show that when a liquor store and a gun store in the same area, twelve percent in crime increases. I also think there wasn't any really thought behind risk management, because to me, this is a risk issue. So you have a delivery of firearms that is going to come in on what, maybe, you know, UPS, FedEx trucks? Who's monitoring that? Who knows whether the truck's going to get hijacked with firearms? Secondly, is the business going to be open at night? This is a walking neighborhood of a lot of children, dogs, animal lovers, people taking, you know, seniors, babies, all this is walking around. So I also think we need to take into consideration that that's going to be an area where someone could break into that, because it's a residential neighborhood, and there is no security. Like, for example, if you look at the Apple Store at Del Monte Shopping Center, there are security guards on staff, where those are high-volume projects, products. So my concern is more of the risk and the message it sends to our community. I think it would have been better suited for, you know, Broadway, or Del Monte, or Fremont. I don't think putting a gun shop in a residential neighborhood with a school nearby and that many people that are residents and tenants and property owners, that that was a good suggestion. More power to the person that wants to operate the store. I just think the choice is not good for the community. The location is poor.
All right. Hello, council. Thank you for having us here today. My objection is also, my, my name is Jonathan Wolfe. I'm a resident of Oak Grove neighborhood. I live on Fourth Street, and my objection is just to the appropriateness of the location. It really is a residential neighborhood as you're in the interior of Oak Grove. On the periphery, there are businesses on Tenth Street, on Del Monte, and something like On the periphery, there are businesses on Tenth Street, on Del Monte, and something like that, I think would be far more appropriate for a business like this. Um, it really affects the character of our neighborhood and our block. Um, it makes our street a destination for people that are seeking weapons. Um, so it's bringing, especially because there are so few stores like this in Monterey, um, it brings people specifically to our block when they want to buy a weapon. So this is where we walk, it is currently a very peaceful neighborhood, we feel very safe there. And myself and other residents now feel unsafe, we've been kept up at night about this. Um, you know, I know there's a very passionate pro-gun constituency and no doubt, you know, there, there should be places you can buy a firearm, but it should be commercial, it should be commercially zoned. It, as you mentioned, is really an adult-use type of business. Um, something like a dispensary, um, you know, I, I think that's far safer than something that sells guns that can be used for violence. Um, you can't kill somebody with.
Excuse me, sir, give me, I, you, I'm allowing y'all to applaud during, after people are speaking, but please do not interrupt somebody when, when they're speaking, that's just disrespectful and we're not going to allow that in the chamber. All right, please continue.
Thank you. Um, yes, so, um, that's primarily it. It, it seems like this business has already been grandfathered in before they've even opened their doors. Um, they're saying it's been established in October, but nothing's been established. Um, if a place were to, uh, apply for an alcohol permit, um, we see these posted in restaurants everywhere, application to get a permit to sell alcohol. There was no permit posted, nothing was posted until chatter happened on Nextdoor, in which case it was already too late. And they've said, oh yeah, it's already established. But all that's been established is that they've fixed up a defunct retail space. Um, and it, it just really brings down our block. It's, it's something that, as mentioned, you know, is, is in character with other parts of town, but not a place that just has, you know, a bodega where you can get, you know, your groceries and stuff. It's having a, a gun store just plopped in the middle of where we purchased our home, really sucks. So that, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Please.
Hello, my name is Linda Harling. I've been a resident of Oak Grove for most of my life. I was very shocked to, uh, learn that we were going to have a gun shop opening in our neighborhood. And I'm wondering who is responsible for its approval, since it's in a sensitive area, near preschool and a senior house facility. The most vulnerable people that we have in the area. Uh, the residents were not notified, I'm a new business. And I know that many of the, of us tried to contact the city, myself personally. Uh, I received no response back. Um, we, uh, have banded together and got 300 signatures now and a petition against the shop opening. And now we, here we are at an emergency city council meeting after exposure on the local news. I'm aware that a Salinas gun shop recently got burglarized, which is another concern for residents. And I know our property values will decrease with this located in our facility. Um, I, uh, am not opposed to people owning guns. I just, as the other people just said, oppose this location. And I hope that you'll be able to curtail this project and keep our families and communities safe. Thank you.
Good afternoon, council. Uh, my name is Ed Stoughtonborough. Um, I am a gun owner, I do security part-time and also executive protection. So I have a, uh, carry permit, um, open and concealed. So just to get those was tremendous amount of training, background checks. Um, just to get the firearm, I had a 10-day waiting period, no, no felonies. It was, it, it wasn't difficult to get it, but I had to go through a lot of, a lot of, um, background checks just to get the firearm. This gentleman who is going to have the gun shop, he's not just going to hand out guns to anyone who walks in. He has to go through a process. You cannot, you cannot firearm if you're a felon. Mr. Smith will understand that quite well. Also, in our neighborhood, right next door, for a number of years was a massage parlor. I don't see the residents getting upset over a massage parlor in our neighborhood. Um, people, it was open until 11 o'clock at night and people, people would sneak in and out, around the corner from a school, around the corner from all kinds of different stuff, but no one said anything about that. This gentleman put in a lot of time and a lot of effort and a lot of money to put this, um, gun shop in. He should be allowed to do it, he's been zoned to do it, you've guys have even given him the permit. And it would be out of character and wrong to take that permit away. So again, I ask that you just let him do his business. He has a lot of laws he has to cover, a lot of agencies that, uh, will be, um, keeping track of him. Thank you.
Wait.
Please go ahead.
Good evening, council members and fellow residents. My name is Monique Caldi. I am a resident of Monterey in District Two, I own property. We've gone over this, it sounds like all of the businesses that have already been licensed are going to be allowed to remain and continue doing their business, so that's not a threat. But what we do need to talk about is the zoning. And it looks like this had just slipped through the cracks, maybe. We talked about cannabis zoning, we talked about liquor zoning, adult businesses, but firearms and ammunition wasn't covered somewhere. So we need to look at something reasonable, what does that look like? Where does it get placed in relation to a school or a daycare or a liquor store? Or any other type of business that might be sensitive? So again, I, I'm not threatened that this business is going to be taken away, but what concerns me is just that we're reasonable in where we place our future businesses. That's all. Thank you.
Hi.
Hi.
I'm woefully unprepared for this, because I wasn't really planning on standing up. But I have lived in Oak Grove for 10 years. I'm a mom. I've got two little kids. And I believe so many things of what these people have said. No, I do not want a discotheque in my neighborhood. No, I do not want a massage parlor in my neighborhood. And we did stand up against that massage parlor and, and it is no longer there. I, I was so excited 10 years ago when we moved in that they were thinking about putting a little playground where the old beauty parlor was on Fifth and Ocean. I was like, this is the most amazing thing, how great is this for families? And then the massage parlor left. And I am not against guns, I'm not against gun stores. I just don't believe it belongs in the middle of a neighborhood with two preschool daycares very close, two of the largest ones in the city. And it is true that that Salinas gun store was robbed a month and a half ago, and 20 arms were taken from it. No one was injured, but there were 20 guns stolen and there was a standoff for a number of hours. These are things that can happen at a gun store. So again, not against this gentleman for trying to open up his store. I'm not against guns, I believe in the second amendment. I am against this store in our little neighborhood. Thank you.
I'll be quick. My name is Jim Woodburnison, Carmel resident. Uh, I just wanted to clarify for everybody in the audience, Car, uh, California has very strict, uh, rules on buying guns. You have a 30-day waiting period, you have a, a very severe background check. And bad guys are not going to be able to go into a gun store and get a gun, even if they wait 30 days. You can't do it, because the background check will nullify them. I'm, like, I have a concealed carry permit like the other gentleman. It's very difficult to get, but it's very difficult even to buy a gun, very difficult. And if you wanted to buy two guns, you got to come back again another month, you got to go through another background check. So the gun stores themselves are very safe, the areas around the gun stores are very safe. You can have a gun, a bad guy can be anywhere, okay? And, and be a bad guy, but around the gun shop itself, I heard somebody got robbed in Salinas and I think I bought a gun from there. Uh, that is unusual and that's not the, the normal course. I knew, normally they have the gates that close and they have security and they have cameras. Uh, definitely during the day and at night, I know it's very secure, how that happened, I don't know. But there is a waiting period, bad guys can't buy guns, bad guys can get guns, but it's going to be on the black market, not in the gun store. Thank you, thank you.
Good afternoon, Steve Magnini, and I'm a resident of, uh, the city of Monterey. And, uh, my, uh, daughter and son-in-law and my four-year-old grandson live in Oak Grove. And we've heard a lot of people pro, uh, guns speaking before us today. And, and the people that are opposed and are supporting this emergency ordinance have all said they're not against guns or gun stores. The concern once again is how many of those people would want to have a gun store a block away from a Teddy Bear School or, uh, where they're living? Uh, I want to point your attention to the C1 Neighborhood Commercial District description. The purpose of the C1 Neighborhood Commercial District is to provide sites for businesses serving the daily needs of nearby residential areas. Is a gun a daily need? Development standards, which we have standards, are intended to prevent significant adverse effects on residential uses adjoining a C1 district. Adverse effects, safety risks, proximity to children, we know that. Uh, potential for increased traffic, sure, you have regulations to get guns, but you're gonna have a lot of traffic and I always hear things, you can't open this because of traffic. You're gonna have a lot of traffic when it's the only gun store in town that, uh, that sells anything. I could go on, property decline, uh, values, and there are a lot of adverse effects. So I urge the council to pass this emergency ordinance and consider a way of, uh, because you've already let the cow out of the barn, hopefully you can get the cow back inside. Thank you very much.
Hi, Robin McKee, I'm also an Oak Grove resident. Um, I'm, I'm glad Steve went through the list of approved uses, because it's expensive, we talked about what it was. But after that, in the language, it lists what is approved. And it's a list of about 32 different items. And nothing on that list says anything about what is unapproved, which I know we talked about earlier, city council did. Firearms is not on that list, I mean, it's hobby stores, it's dress stores, it's convenience stores. And again, it comes back to, is it a daily appropriate use for the neighborhood? And if it's going to create an adverse effect, that's to be noted, I think. And I, the concern, the concern right now is I'm glad that there's, there's a note now, kind of a pin in, oh, we don't have regulations about hours or proximity to perhaps an inappropriate location. And I'm glad you're thinking about perhaps looking at that. But what to do about this one is really a conundrum. Um, the massage parlor was mentioned. Many, 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 many residents called the city and tried to do something about the massage parlor, but it was already a done deal. Some kind of due diligence wasn't done. It wasn't just a little go in and have your feet rubbed massage parlor, it was a happy ending massage parlor, forgot about that. But once that business was in place, the city couldn't get them out. And we have a very similar situation with the gun store. So finding a way to make right essentially a misstep of not notifying the residents of what was going on. I feel very sorry for the young man or a group of people who've put me into this. Someone should have thought about the owner, the LEC, hmm, maybe we're going to get some pushback on this. And unfortunately, the city didn't notify anybody or put any word out there to the neighbor, neighborhood. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. My name's Robert Walker, I do, also live in the Oak Grove Neighborhood, uh, and I've spoken before about this. I, there's a lot of repeated, repeated, uh, comments both, on both sides. Uh, I'm not, I'm not against gun ownership, it is a, an amendment right, uh, it's the location. Uh, I was very involved in trying to remove the massage parlor whorehouse that was a, literally next door to this property. Um, the commercial zoning in this neighborhood is not working, hasn't worked. Um, that, that property where the gun shop was has been vacant for years. Uh, because it's not really a retail space, it's more of a residential space. The whole house was gone, we actually released the space and turned it into residential space. Um, and I know that when you get a permit of certain types in the city, it's requirement that public notice is given and that you are to send, that you actually, uh, have to send out a notice of what's going to happen within a 300-foot radius, which is actually a fairly small radius. But if that had been done, I think the same response would have been from the neighbors. We did a, a survey, uh, we sent out a survey, over 300 people have signed that. Most of the people in this neighborhood, 313 as of two days ago. So it's kind of pretty well-known at this point that people would have probably objected then and not subjected to a guy who got the permit, spent the money on leasehold improvements. He could have done the same thing in a commercially zoned, commercial activity-type location. Strip mall or down on Fremont Boulevard, which is not far away, or a number of other places, which there's plenty of vacancies in commercial, uh, space. So that's not really an issue, but it's, it's unfortunate. Getting rid of the massage parlor was very, very difficult. I called the city probably 30 times during that time, myself, most of the time, never got a response. Finally, it was removed, which we appreciate. Anyway, thank you for your consideration and I, I would approve the emergency, um, situation where we get a chance to really take a look at this thing. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, and with that, we'll go to our online speakers.
Yes, and mayor, we've had a few hands pop up since you were cut off. So just to make it clear, I'll be calling on the five whose hands were raised by the time the mayor that made the, the call. Go ahead, Esther.
Good afternoon, everybody, um, Esther Malkin, I live in the Laguna Grande neighborhood, which is nearby. Um, I wanted to just, I don't see the timer, by the way, okay, there it is. Um, I just want to point out a couple of things. It's not like we don't have any gun shops. Nobody is being deprived from going to satisfy their needs of their gun purchases or owners, owner, uh, or, uh, maintenance or ownership. I don't see how in a city of 30,000 people, it's really necessary to have additional gun shops than what we've had. But whatever, I just wonder, this person who decided to go to that location in a residential area, did he really, did they, he think that that was going to be well-received by the residents there? Were there no other locations available? What was the rationale between, you know, to, to pick that location, knowing that those residents and a daycare was close by? And, and, you know, I want to remind everybody about Sandy Hook. You know, I lived in, in Denver when Columbine happened and nobody thought that that could happen again. And it's happened a hundred, hundreds of times. But Sandy Hook in particular was, was very heart-wrenching. And we're looking at, you know, little kids being able to walk to this gun shop. Um, I hope it won't take a tragedy like that for the, whoever is so interested in pushing this on these neighbors. Um, if this was proposed on Alvarado, what would, what would it seem like to the business owners there? Would they feel safer with, you know, doors and gates and, you know, tons of security right outside their, their businesses that they share that area with? Lastly, I want to bring up, I live across the street from where the, an incident happened last week, that 20 firearms were found. They were not just hunting rifles, there was an assault rifle. They could literally have shot my house and me from that house. And there, there was no reason for that to have that many, they, they didn't have that many guns.
All right, thank you. The next speaker is Erica.
All right, hello, uh, my name is Erica Delamar and I'm a resident and homeowner in the Laguna Grande neighborhood here in Monterey, so nearby. I want to state that I believe in our constitution and the amendments that allow us the freedoms of all Americans. I want to be really clear about that. However, I want to express my support to both the mayor and the city council for the urgency ordinance to temporarily prohibit the establishment of gun and ammunition business. As you're all aware, the northern part of Monterey already has trouble with higher rates of crime, drug activity, and unhoused folks. In late January, I provided life-saving CPR to a woman who overdosed in my neighborhood when three- when three drug dealers fled the scene, leaving her there unconscious. Then just last week, a convicted felon was found by Monterey police to have numerous guns and ammunition stored unsecured in his house, just around the corner from me, as Esther just mentioned. I walk past that house every day with my dog and I was shocked by what the police discovered. So yes, it is against the law for felons to own firearms, but we cannot rely on felons to follow the laws. This is not what I expected when I bought my home in Monterey. We must work to keep our community safe, especially families with small children. Gun shops attract clientele who have absolutely no business being within proximity of two children's preschools. Just this year alone, in 2025, we have already had four school shootings in the United States. Last year it was eighty-three total. We cannot normalize guns to children that are just beginning their lives. We can't have a gun shop on corners around families, around schools, because we cannot normalize guns to children. It's not the safe thing to do. As your voting constituent, I urge you to pass this urgency ordinance to allow time to assess how Monterey will handle not only this case, but others moving forward. Obviously, there's been a trend over the last couple of months here since 2024. And we need to go forward thoughtfully and really think and plan for the future. Adult businesses like gun stores need to be restricted to commercial and industrial zoned areas only, away from homes and places where families and children congregate, such as preschools, schools, parks, restaurants and recreational areas. Thank you so much, Mayor and City Council, for keeping our city safe and making it a safe place for children to grow up.
Our next speaker is Eloise on the phone. Eloise, please dial star six to unmute.
Okay, so this is Eloise Shim talking again. And what I want to say is that I think that it is an emergency to disallow the new gun shop to open. The reason why I say that is because I'm a retired educator. I've worked at Monterey High School, Seaside High School, Marina High School, when ATF came in and looked through the students' lockers, which was dismaying to me, if not traumatic really, because when I was in high school, I never had anybody looking through my locker looking for guns or whatever they're looking for. So, you know, right away, this is already a problem that I didn't have back in the day when I was a teenager. And the other thing is, to say that it isn't a problem, the problem is that the people that go to bars, like you, there are other people with aggressive intentions. They take the guns to the bars. So to say, you know, it's not the guns, it's the bars that are the problem. No, they take the guns to the bars. Now, I don't know if you all remember there was a bar in Monterey called the Bull and Something Bar. Well, they had a murder there back in the day. There was a murder there. I remember walking down the street in Tyler Street and the police were brandishing firearms because there was some guy with a BB gun threatening people. And I was traumatized because I didn't want to be in the middle of a gunfight between the police and somebody with a gun. So also, somebody just robbed the jewelry store in Monterey. So people will then, they will, the people that have expensive merchandise will now automatically want to defend themselves with guns. So that's a higher increase of gun violence in Monterey, and that's not good.
Next, we have Annette to speak.
All right. Thank you. Annette Pelanet, I live on Fourth Street, just a little bit over three hundred feet from the planned location of the gun shop. This isn't a commentary on gun rights. It is a plea for thoughtful consideration of the types of businesses that enrich our community. Our neighborhood, Oak Grove, is characterized by its focus on community and nurturing environments for children and families. There was no notification to the community, as you would have expected. You know, if they were putting in a liquor store or apparently a massage parlor, there would be notification. But a gun shop, no notification to the local community. And clearly, once people found out, there are many, many concerns. My main concern is the proximity to homes, preschools and parks. Again, I live on Fourth Street, just two doors down from Teddy Bear Preschool. It is an inappropriate place for this business. It's inconsistent with the energy and values and culture of our neighborhood. Thank you.
And the last speaker is Alicia.
Hello, my name is Alicia Iverson. I'm a homeowner in Oak Grove. I have many concerns about the gunshot permitted for my neighborhood, which was done without notifying anyone in our community. First is traffic on Third Street. We do not need any more traffic on a street that's already plagued by people who speed. Next is parking. There's no parking at that location. Parking in Oak Grove is already tight and locating a gun shop there would take spaces away from residents. Property values will be driven down. Perspective buyers will see a gun shop and decide against the neighborhood due to perceived crime. My husband and I work hard to be able to afford to live in Oak Grove. We do not want our property values to decline. Oak Grove is a provincial neighborhood. Residents want it to stay that way, safe and quiet. Adding a controversial gun shop does not fit with the nature of this community as outlined in the Oak Grove neighborhood plan that was signed off by the city. Safety is our next reason I have concerns. Will the residents be safe? What about accidental discharges, burglaries and larceny of weapons? As mentioned before, a gun shop in Salinas was just robbed in December and nearly two dozen weapons were stolen. A gun shop would attract that kind of crime to our neighborhood. Therefore, we have submitted a petition with over three hundred signatures against this gun shop. And more so, it is not appropriate to put a gun shop within blocks of two daycare facilities. We need to protect the next generation, not expose them to firearms and potential accidents. The zoning in Oak Grove is for businesses that are beneficial for the day-to-day use of our residents. How is a busy, controversial gun shop beneficial to a peaceful community with a lot of small children? The permit for this gun shop needs to be revoked and the gun shop located elsewhere. Thank you for your attention to this matter.
So I know that we got some public comments after the fact and we don't normally do this, but I know that this is a really important issue for a lot of folks. So I'm going to open up the public comment period again. And for those that weren't here prior, what we typically do for public comments is we identify the folks at the beginning of the public comment period and then close the opportunity for people to speak and then open it up again for people to speak. So we're going to open it up at this point. Anybody that hasn't already spoken on this issue, if you would do me a favor and stand up to the left of the podium if you're in the chamber. For folks that are on Zoom, if you could use the raise hand function. All right. Anybody else in the chamber? I see three folks in the front here. Anybody else? Anybody in the back? Anybody else? This is the last call. Okay, so we have the three in the chamber and I'll do a countdown for folks on Zoom to five, four, three, two, one. We have three folks on Zoom. So go ahead and start here in the chamber and you'll have two and a half minutes.
Good afternoon. My name is Chad Ballman. I am an Oak Grove resident. I am a small business owner. I've been in the Navy since nineteen ninety-two. I'm an expert pistol shot. I'm an expert rifle shot. I've been qualified in both of those since nineteen ninety-two. I have taught people how to become expert pistol marksmen. I have supervised weapons transfers. I have taught my crew on a submarine, security, firearm safety and how to perform the duties of a century. Every gun, every bullet adds risk. Every weapon adds risk. Putting a gun shop in a neighborhood next to a school, preschool, federal military base and a retirement community adds risk and liability to the owners, to the city, to our police forces, which would be called upon to respond. This is a decision that should not have been made in this neighborhood. This is a decision that can conceivably be changed in the future and I urge you to. In the meantime, I urge you to not accept any additional risk in this matter and to pass the ordinance. I can see every side of this argument. The laws that many of the people in here have spoken to, the sunk costs as a business owner, that's unfortunate. You make those choices when you choose to start a business. The laws and the protections that they claim are in place to ensure legal gun owners shown up and they have training, that's great. You know why those laws exist? Because of risk that you're adding and accepting in the first place. So let's not do that in this neighborhood where it makes no sense and doesn't add to the net character of Oak Grove. It doesn't add to vital services that the city needs for the risk that we are then imposing on the residents, our security forces and the passersby. Thank you very much.
Mayor, City Council, my name is Monica Law. I'm with the Monterey Peninsula Chamber of Commerce. Thank you for having this meeting. We wish it would have been more noticed, frankly. We understand your consideration and the important factors that are up in front of you. The neighborhoods, the businesses, what's appropriate. However, to impose a moratorium on the establishment of new firearms and ammunition retail sales businesses, it seems like it's with the immediate purpose of preventing a business from opening in the city of Monterey. If there are other locations that are appropriate, depending on the outcome of this, if there are considerations to work with the applicant, please take those into consideration. However, not specific to this, but this legislative strategy could be extended to many types of businesses that some residents would regard as compromising their quality of life. Those would include liquor stores, cannabis retail stores, dealerships for vehicles powered by combustion engines, restaurants that serve alcohol, fast food restaurants, dollar stores. It could extend to a lot. So if the city council feels the Second Amendment to the U.S. Constitution and allows a limit on the prohibition of firearm sales within the city limits, it should engage in proper notice with public deliberation on the matter and with a specific date. This business did go the proper channels and it was approved. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Monica.
Good afternoon, City Council and Mayor Williamson. My name is Gina Puccinelli and I didn't expect that I would be here today. I don't have notes, but I put myself in the places of the people who live in this community. I used to live there in the same community on Fifth Street. I'm very aware of the area. And everybody has, I don't want to repeat things that everyone has said, but I do feel strongly about our community and the love for community and feeling safe with the children. We have to make the right decisions for the children. And I feel very strongly that is this right decision for where to place this gun shop? Really? If I lived in that neighborhood, I would feel very much like the people who have spoken. I would just think, wow, that's pretty scary. You don't need to... If we have other choices, I think we should really look at it. I would urge for the emergency ordinance to go through, to really carefully and thoughtfully think this through. I really think it's important for this community. And it could set, if it goes through, it could set a precedence for other communities thinking, oh, let's put a gun shop in that community. It happened in this one. I don't think that's the best idea personally. I hope you will consider what has been shared here today and think about our community and the children and just come back to the basics about if we lived in that neighborhood. I don't, but I, gosh, I don't think I'd like that. I put myself in their shoes. Thank you so much for your consideration. Thank you.
Okay. And with that, we'll go to our speakers online.
This is Mrs. R. Mrs. R., you can unmute and go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you so much for the work that you're doing here and for, you know, opening a space to reconsider having this store. My name is Mrs. Ramirez. I'm a retired second grade teacher of thirty-two years and I've owned my home here for sixteen years now. And this, we bought this house because it was a safe community because families and elderly people could go for walks into the late evenings in the summertime. And it just feels, it feels like a home all the way around. And what I want people to consider is, you need to imagine that this is not just a store. It's a store next door to homes, to private family homes and down the street from a daycare. It doesn't belong here. I am totally in favor of gun ownership. I am totally in favor of stores having regulations. I am totally in favor of having businesses that sell legal guns and legal ammunition. I am not in favor of the traffic that's going to come into this community that does not currently exist. I am really urging you to please reconsider having this store so close to families and children and homes, private homes, family homes. So I thank you and I hope that you move in the right direction because this business does have a right to have a business, but it should be in a place that's commercial. Thank you so much.
Next is Raymond. Raymond, if you could unmute, you can go ahead and speak.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, go ahead, please.
Okay, thank you. It seems that the business itself is being established in a residential and commercial zone. It's Nick zoning that I understand. And the business owner himself hasn't violated any laws or anything in developing this business. But it seems that the communities come together and decided that there's a certain type of business they'd prefer not being there. I've lived here a long time and it seems that all the other gun stores have been closed down. The sporting goods stores have been closed, have stopped carrying guns. And it's taken away the right for people that want to defend themselves. You can't buy a gun in Monterey County. And part of the issue isn't the gun itself, but is the values of the community. When people start making poor choices and they're not held accountable for their decisions and the community makes excuses for bad decisions, it seems like it's the values of the community itself that becomes the problem. If we have, by having a gun store located in Monterey, it also provides classes and education as well. it also provides classes and education as well. So people are better educated and better prepared to be able to handle a gun to defend themselves. It seems that the people that bought the homes in that area, but in mixed zoning, you know, it's a mixed zoning community. And it seems that that's part of the problem itself, is people are trying to change what the zoning is without going through the procedures to accomplish this. And so it seems that people need to come back to the drawing board and take all this into consideration. Not at this time, the person developing the business put a lot of time, effort, and expense in developing the business. Personally, myself, there are other locations with more sufficient parking, you know, more on mainstream thoroughfare like Del Monte Avenue. But at the same time, he's chosen to build his business where he's chosen to do it. It's still in a commercial zone, and I think that everybody needs to stand behind him and maybe another suggestion in the process.
And our last speaker is Oak Grove Neighbor. Go ahead, please. Oak Grove Neighbor, we cannot hear you.
Hello, can you hear me? Hello, oh, hello.
Can you? Please go ahead.
Oh, you can hear me. Thank you. Sorry. So I live in the neighborhood. I own guns, right? So this isn't about no gun shops in Monterey. I don't, I don't understand how you would look at this place and say this is a good place for a gun shop. And the main reason I feel that way is for the owners as well. So there are gun shop robberies are common. There was one in Salinas. There's, you know, all over the state. And the new thing is to, it's called a crash and grab, where you drive a car into a building and you go in and you loot it, okay? And this has happened. There was a string of nine of these. It was the same people doing them in Southern California at the end of last year. It took them nine robberies and intensive robberies to catch these people. This happens all over the country. You can look it up. You know, and there's a lot of gun stores that have started, and other retailers have started like, you know, having no windows, having bollards, having security, having gates, and they still get robbed. So, you know, you're putting people at danger and you're putting yourself at danger to have this. And I know that this has gone through and that these people were able to get their permit for whatever reason, they want to be in the space. I don't really understand why, but that was, you know, they did it and it was, they got in and it doesn't sound like they're going to leave. But if there's any way, you know, this is really on the city for having, you know, so most cities will not let you do this in C-1 zoning. This is C-1 zoning, you know, and most places have these, like this Chamber of Commerce lady was saying, actually, like there's different zoning in most places. You can't have a gun shop in C-1 zoning, you know? And like when she's talking about auto shops, yes, that's a certain zoning. You know, when you're talking about bowling alleys, yes, there's a certain zoning for that as well. And so the zoning needs to be updated, but that's too late for this business. I don't know if there's some sort of like Chamber of Commerce fund or fund from the city. You know, if these people did decide that they ended up wanting to relocate and, you know, needed financial assistance for that. Because it's really not, what I'm hearing is not no gun shops in Monterey. I'm hearing this is a really bad place to put this business. It was unwise. It's unwanted. You know, and I don't know that it's going to, the business is going to thrive the way that the owners wanted to thrive. I would go to their business if it was on 10th. I would go to their business on Lighthouse. I'm not going to go to this business. I'm not going to encourage others to go to it. You know, and that's too bad. I don't want to be that way, but it just, it makes me sick thinking about the possibility of an accident or robbery. Thank you.
Okay, so we're going to go ahead and close public comment. Thank you for everybody that, that shared public comments, whether in support or in opposition to. The council has heard you. We also received messages via email. And I'm sure my colleagues joined me in, in reading all those. I'm going to go a little bit out of fashion here if council will allow me. I usually allow the council to speak first, then I go last, but I, I want to kick us off. I want to first highlight that this was truly a community-driven initiative. We first heard about this through residents expressing concerns on Nextdoor. Some residents that are, some that are in the room showed up to our last council meeting and spoke during general public comments and made the entire council aware of this. And, and since some of my colleagues, at least I can speak for myself, have worked with staff on looking at opportunities and in ways in which we can address this issue. And the emergency ordinance that is in front of us is a good first step. This, and I want to reiterate, this has nothing to do with addressing the issues as they relate to the business in Oak Grove. I personally have some feelings in regards to that business being there. And I hope that there's opportunities for us to continue looking at where the opportunities exist to, to maybe see if that business can move. Because I do have concern that I heard from residents before today, but even here today, hearing from more residents around concern around that business being located in that community. I do want to say early on here that not all gun owners are bad. So oftentimes, this issue becomes a conversation that's an us versus them mentality. And I think we need to find a way of rolling it back a little bit and lowering the temperature in the room and finding a way to listen to each other so that we can find common sense and reasonable solutions that help protect everybody in the community. And that's people that want to have their Second Amendment rights, right, to be able to have a firearm. But that's also others that are concerned around what that means in regards to safety. And I imagine that every gun owner in the room, every person in the room that carries a firearm, I can probably guarantee that you all utilize your weapons in a safe and responsible way. Not everybody does, which is why we know that there's a lot of these laws in place and it's such a hotly debated issue because people are concerned around the safety and the impacts to human life. Accidents do happen, actually, and I just want to reiterate, and I think some of the public comments shared earlier, recreational use, gaming, right? There are, there are folks that, that use guns in a safer, responsible way. So I just kind of wanted to add further to that. Accidents do happen, though, and we, we've heard of stories where babies and toddlers get a hold of guns that aren't locked up appropriately and end up killing themselves accidentally. We hear of accidental suicides. So these things do happen, and, and I think it's the other side of the coin in which how do we find this to, to manage it in a responsible way? Studies also show that more gun shops in an area, in an area that is linked to higher rates of gun deaths, including suicides and homicides. There was a speaker that spoke to this earlier. One of the things that I think about is our staff. One of the things that this council is most responsible for is our, everybody on our staff. And the people that are going to have to respond when there is an issue is our public safety officials. And I want to make sure that we reduce the impacts that they have to their life and what they have to do to put themselves in harm way every single day. There's going to be a huge discussion around how we proceed, where, what permitting and appropriate use of, of a firearm shop looks like in Monterey. And so that's not really for the discussion today. I think I want to make sure that we allow that, that process to play out. But I just want to reiterate some of the things that I heard tonight and maybe just kind of passing this to staff as they start chewing and working on a permanent ordinance as we move forward. Permissive use, the location, security requirements, notification of neighboring residents, parking, bollards. So those were just some of the things that, that I heard today. I want to speak to some of the comments too from, there was folks that brought up issues with cannabis. Cannabis was well discussed. It was well communicated with the public. Every single resident in the city of Monterey received a postcard so that we could receive their impact and their input and feedback regarding that. We've had town hall workshops. There were several city council meetings. This is well vetted. I still recognize that people disagree with cannabis businesses within the city of Monterey, but that was well vetted. And I think that's a similar process that we want to go through here because of the concerns that exist within our community. The other business types, you know, liquor stores, gas combustion. I, I think we, we need to have conversations around all the things that create harm to our community. Right now, we're hearing from a lot of residents around this topic, and that's why this is being addressed. It's an emergency ordinance. We're just putting a hold. This has nothing to do with the businesses that are currently in operation. We'll cross that bridge when we get there, and we'll make sure that there's plenty of public notice in regards to how we proceed with this. I also heard comments earlier. There was a speaker that spoke to concerns around homelessness. And, and I felt the, the emotion associated with those public comments. Nobody should ever feel unsafe in their community. This is a public safety issue. And so I just want to share that homelessness is a tough issue. And when you, anybody, find a community that has solved the homelessness issue, let us know because we want to make sure that we follow those practices. But in the meantime, if you have an issue with homelessness, I want you to contact our staff, contact the non-emergency police line. We have a community action team that responds to homeless-related issues and tries to help them in a humanitarian way. If they're causing harm in the community, we will make sure to get those folks off the street so that they're not causing harm to themselves and others. So I just wanted to put that out there, kind of as a public service announcement. I obviously am supporting the emergency ordinance. Again, I'll reiterate, I have some concern around this business being there. And I'm hoping that we can find an agreeable way for the business to continue operating, but maybe in a more appropriate space. But we need to get this ordinance established so we can figure out as a community together where we're going to put, where we're going to allow these businesses to, to function and operate. And with that, I'll open up to the rest of the council. Dr. Barber.
So yeah, again, thank you so much for all of the comments. I did have a question, if, if you will allow me to ask the question, dealing with the process, and then I'll go into my comments. But I wanted to know, what is the process for notification permitting and being established? What, what does that look like as far as timeline?
Are you talking about a proposed ordinance?
No, as far as like a business, this business going in, the notification, the permit, the establishment, all, all the steps. What does that timeline look like?
So it depends. It depends. If the use is principally permitted, like retail sales is, there is no permit required and no noticing required. The business can apply for the business license and they can open their business. For businesses that require a use permit, Councilmember Rash was talking about the U. The U requires a public notice of 10 days from properties within 300 feet of the premise, and we hold a notice public hearing. And those decisions are appealable from either zoning administrator to planning commission to council or from planning commission to council, depending on what level of business it is. If it is a prohibited business, then they, you know, they don't have the opportunity to open unless a zoning ordinance amendment is proposed. And that goes through, obviously, the, the typical hearing process to amend our codes.
Thank you so much. So yeah, and I know that will be fleshed out more when we have time to research it and, and find out more about how to handle this and going forward. But tonight is more about whether we do the emergency ordinance. And I think it's important because I think we want to make sure that everybody has their, their, their rights to be able to bear arms and their rights to be able to purchase a gun safely, legal guns. But I think it is important to where they are supposed to be. I think we need to revisit our zoning and our, and our uses in the city to make sure that we're not looking over, overlooking anything else. And I think it's important for us to be able to make sure that our citizens are safe. And, and also, it's just as you can go buy a gun, we want to make sure that the citizens are safe. And I think everybody needs to be, everybody is owed and do that to live in harmony and safety. So I think that's important, and that's why I will be supporting this tonight.
Councilwoman Garcia.
Thank you. First, thank you to everyone who joined in public comment here in person and online. I think putting my, my opinions about guns aside for a moment, I acknowledge, listening to staff and, and public, L and B went through the proper process that the city has outlined for licensing. But the reason that we are here tonight is because the community has spoken. Residents are concerned about this business opening up. And that's why we have this type of forum. So the concerns, I feel it's our obligation, not only as council staff, but as a community, these concerns need to be addressed. And I think also that having been a business owner in the past, as, as a business owner, it is my responsibility to understand better the composition of the area where I'm intending to open the business for the purpose of trying to project the success of my business. I think if, if that step hasn't happened, right, there's, there's a risk there. And potentially, that's something that we're seeing as well here, where really the, the, the atmosphere or the sentiment of the neighborhood wasn't completely considered prior to moving forward with, with the process of establishing a business. Another point that I want to raise here is that, once again, and it has been, I think, brought up is that this, this item is not about looking to remove people's rights to, to bear arms, to be owners, to use them or to, to purchase them. This is more about an item of, you know, how, how we envision our neighborhoods. What is the composition of our community? And how do we see that composition in, in years ahead? It's, it's not about taking anybody's rights. It's, and, and, and I think I'll echo also some of my colleagues' points. I think Mayor Williamson also brought it up that, you know, it's, it's an opportunity to really think about what, what zoning looks like for a city, what the ordinance is, and how we can work together to really figure out what, what is the best path forward for everyone involved, for the community who's concerned, for the business owner who, at this point, possibly has some, some major decisions to make depending on how things go tonight. I'll also acknowledge that the city of Monterey has other issues, and those need to be addressed as well. But tonight, we're talking about this particular business and how to move forward. I think it's also an opportunity for us to look at other facilities or, or other structures in the city that are zoned the same way. I know that there are other structures in District Four in particular that fall under the same zoning. One in particular, I can think that if, if we were to allow a gun shop to open there, it would be directly across the street from a school. So there's some cleaning up definitely that needs to happen there in terms of, of policy. I've been exposed to guns at a young age. I've seen the ugliness that guns can bring. But I've also seen the benefits that it brings in terms of protection. So I, I think we just, as we move forward with this conversation, we need to keep an open mind about, you know, really what we want to do as residents of our beautiful city and, and what that composition really needs to look like as we move forward. That's all. Thank you.
Okay, please.
So thank you for everybody who came out tonight, and for those of you who submitted your statements, we really appreciate that. And that, that is definitely very helpful, and the callers as well tonight. I, I want to, I want to get right to the heart of the matter. What is an emergency ordinance for, for this particular C1 topic? You know, for, for me, this, this establishes something that is a policy that would be for the future. The gun shop that's soon to open on Ocean and Third is not the topic, as our other council members have talked about. What's before us tonight is to craft new policy that pertains to community safety and establishing some outlined policies for the future. So it's not about applying anything to any other gun shop that's currently operating. I, I want to talk about why, why we would do anything at all. Some have written and asked and called and said, what are you getting involved in this for? And that's not the city's business. It's already regulated by the federal government. If, if that were the case, and I said I didn't want to do anything at all, I would be saying, I'm out of a job and I'd walk away and I'm never going to approach crafting public policy with the, the safety of the community at large. I think I have an obligation to weigh in on direction to staff to improve something that has been brought to us that, you know, probably an oversight, probably something that we had never faced before. And probably something that had we brought it forward and crafted something, we probably would have weighed in with some guidelines and policy that pertain to gun stores in a C1. So I am about crafting a policy that has the right balance, that protects the citizens, the neighbors, and protects the integrity of C1. And I ask myself in my own neighborhood, where I live on a strip that has commercial property eight, eight doors away from my home. Would I want a gun shop to be opened up that close to my home? Probably not. Would it change the character of my home or would it decline my property values? I don't know. That's guessing in the future. I don't think that's really determinable. But in my mind, there are certain businesses that do or should necessitate the right location. Some of the factors that do lay into this are obviously at the forefront is public safety, safety to regulate. As an example, fire hazards, the appropriate storage of ammunition, the storage of guns. Should they have a safe? Should they have an alarm? Do we regulate the operating hours because we don't want the impact to neighborhoods? So when it's a C1, it really is a whole lot different than if it's on a main strip of business. Like, there is a distinction here because when we have C1s, mixed use, and this is not the only conflict we've ever had to deal with in mixed use, believe it or not. This happens quite frequently. And it's difficult because from what was 100 years ago is not, it was maybe appropriate then, it's not necessarily a good mix now. So we have to dive in and create the right use permits and the policing action that the city does under its charter law appropriately does act to throw our authority into that to, once again, look back at the, the nature of the community, the safety of the community, the quality of life that residents in a mixed use deserve. I'm concerned about if I'm defining a C1 and uses and coming back with what does it look like to me? I'm asking questions like the distance of the school. You know, the nature of the residence and its proximity. Some neighborhoods are fragile, close proximity, preschools, parks, et cetera. Parking is certainly a factor. Hours of operation, security I already mentioned. This, this is an opportunity for us to say, from a public safety point, and I'll just use this example, then I'm going to get off the, the podium here. We have some that are FLL, federally licensed and in the business of ordering ammo. And I don't know if they receive the ammo or if it's just a third party, so they make a sale, they order it, it's shipped elsewhere to the customer. I don't know that for sure. But if I'm looking at a future policy, I would think if someone is in that business that is permitted by the federal government, we would have an interest to know for sure that they are not storing ammunition in the garage, which would impact the neighbors. So I think that's a reasonable thing to ask for, not that we're interfering with a person's business. But I don't think an R1 and a C1 should be the place where we have storage of ammunition that creates fire hazards. So move, moving on, in support of why I think it is appropriate to have a short-term emergency ordinance, and I wouldn't want to see it go past 90 days. I think that's a reasonable amount of time for our city staff to come back to us to make some recommendations about an appropriate use on future gun stores in C1 and also how it would be impacted in business districts, but especially C1, I think is deserving. I think it's time to update the zoning to be able to cover that part because we have a hole. It does not cover what should be covered. I don't want it to be an overreach that goes too far, that says we're outlining all future gun stores or we're going to put a limit on gun stores. I don't think that that's what we're after or should be after. I think it's a legitimate business that has a right to operate. We have a constitutional law that allows gun owners from the United States to purchase guns when they are qualified. They are fully vetted. And as many of the speakers have pointed out, a gentleman that indicated he was from the Navy and firearms safety instructor, I think he touched the points exactly, that people are trained to handle weapons. Gun dealers who are selling weapons and ammunition know what to do. The problem I have is there may be an apartment upstairs and there may be that accidental discharge in the future. But we hope it's not because the sign at the door that business says, no ammunition, no live ammunition shall be ever brought into this business. No gun can come in loaded. I, I mean, no, I know how they operate. But there are accidents that could happen. And with someone living in close quarters upstairs without having a steel ceiling, there is no protection. So we, we need to address that for safety's sake. I want to strike a balance between the constitutional amendments or the Second Amendment with a constitutional right to carry, constitutional right to own and to purchase. It's already highly regulated, so we don't need to go that far. The use should be allowed under the right locations with some more language in our zoning that designates things that protect the safety of our neighborhoods. Oak Grove may not be ideal, but under the current law, it was permissible for the planning department to accept the application to move ahead. So it's not on them, it's on this council to craft something going forward to fix something that's probably an older zoning that just was never even thought about. I formerly lived on Third Street when I was a young cop, just starting out. I did not bring my firearm home. I left it at work. My son, daughter-in-law and grandson just moved from Fourth Street. My son did not bring his firearm home. He left it with me in my safe or in a safe elsewhere away from his son. Legitimate gun owners know how to handle their guns. State law requires that it's secured from minors, must be locked. And I think that most legitimate gun dealers are going to have a safe and they're putting their guns away at night, just like a jewelry store does. So I think that that's a legitimate business. We have to acknowledge that stuff is not just out for the taking. Now, the Salinas incident was not a daytime incident. It was a robbery. And I think it was a vehicle smashed into the building. So a little different. But if the guns are secured in a safe, I think it's relatively safe for the neighboring businesses. But I don't think it should be so close in a proximity like Oak Grove on Ocean and Third. And my last comment is, we need to fix what is not covered in the ordinance. I'd like to see it come back with a short order of 90 days. And I do agree with the staff, staff recommendation that we do an emergency order or ordinance. And the reason it's an emergency order, ordinance is that we have to declare and have findings that it's an emergency. And I believe that there is sufficient findings to say that this is an emergency ordinance to go back and give us something that's got some meat on it with specifics with the overriding focus of safety in the neighborhood, safety of the neighbors of that future gun store business. Thank you. I'm sorry. I'm so long.
Really quick, before we get to Gene, can staff speak to the timeline a little bit in regards to what this looks like? So I know that Ed was just talking about no longer than 90 days, but I, I'm, I'm wondering how that might fit into staff's timeline of being able to get this done.
So what you're doing right now is, should the emergency ordinance pass, it's valid for up to 45 days. We will come back on April 1st with a request to extend the emergency ordinance. At that time, we probably have also a good idea of how many days. At that time, you can extend it for another period of 10 months and 15 days. And that adds then up to 12 months total. And should the ordinance not be done or written by that timeframe, there is actually also another extension possible for another up to 12 months. But a good check-in with staff for us will be in 45 days, April 1st, when we can let you know where we are with, with all the directions and the input we have received at that time as well.
Thank you, Hans. Okay, we'll pass it to Councilman Rash.
Thank you. Thank you to everyone who spoke this evening. That's what makes our city safer and our democracy stronger. So thank you. This is a difficult one, and it's a question of balance. I was raised by a West Point Army Colonel who went to Class of 41, went to war. He taught me how to use a 22 when I was 12. I'm living with a gun owner, gun owner, and he locks it. It's always locked. So I appreciate everything that people who responsibly handle guns were saying is extremely difficult to own a gun. It's extremely difficult to open up a shop. All the licensing is rigid. I believe all that and I have a lot of respect for it. I do believe in the Second Amendment. I do believe in the right to buy and bear arms. I also believe that the owner has a vested right to his business. I also believe that the issue of gun, especially nearby with children, is a very triggering issue and, and it, it just is and always will be. And we can't, it is a safety issue. It is perceived as a safety issue for families. That's just the way it is. I'm also a strong advocate in the public controlling local zoning ordinances. And I think that's, as we've noticed, where we might have dropped the ball here. We have the problem with, we have commercial zoning that up butts right up to residential. If we, when we look at the, this ordinance, we need to think about overlays with that. We have these use permits that need to be more clearly defined. I do support the urgency ordinance. We, we need a safer approach to the zoning. We need to work fast and quickly on that. Do a good job and have a lot of public outreach and a public hearing and do it well and, and hear everyone. But the urgency ordinance tonight is only a pause. It's not a takeaway of anyone's Second Amendment rights. Those are intact and will remain intact. But it allows for thoughtful planning on where citizens want their ordinances and zonings to be. And that, that will be a good thing. That's a good thing. Somehow guns have to be considered in the category of what I would call adult businesses. I think technically adult businesses are considered to be massage parlors and have a sexual connotation. But to me, it's where would you have children go? Okay? You, you, we don't allow children to go buy alcohol. So that's, that's legislated. Massage parlors and guns should be an adult convenience, okay, an adult activity. So we need to look at the language. I'm sure staff is taking notes madly. And, and we'll go forward with that because it sounds like I'm the fifth vote. I do have a lot of concerns for the residents remaining in Oak Grove with, with the, the store opening. And I, I, I really empathize with you and don't quite know what to do about that. I, I do think we should look at efforts at buying out the lesser, the, he does have rights, but maybe we can negotiate with that. He's probably very aware of the reception that this is receiving. And maybe we can find some kind of a win-win with with somebody ponying up some money. And I, I would think, I would support the city ponying up some money to buy his lease out and locate him somewhere more appropriately. I would also support possible discussions in the community, may perhaps through the Mendel Gisnet Center for conflict, conflict resolution. Maybe we could have some kind of meetings down at the youth center right near Dennis the Menace Park, where perhaps the, the owner of the business can talk with residents and we can get a little bit more peace around this. Can't take away his lease right now, but maybe we can find a way forward. I, I'm very willing to, to work on that. As a licensed attorney, I, I would offer any services I can be to the community to work this out a little bit better for the people who are living in Oak Grove. So I support the urgency ordinance. Thank you.
With that, I'm going to go ahead and move staff recommendation.
Second.
Any other discussion?
Just to clarify the motion.
Please.
The motion is to declare the emergency ordinance and with that direct staff to come back within 45 days.
That's correct.
Okay. And I just wanted to make sure that that was language of the motion, if you wouldn't mind including that.
Yep, that, that's part of the staff recommendation. Any other discussion? All right, all those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. And with that, I'm going to give everybody a second to adjust. So folks want to stay, we have more business to handle. But if you want to head out, I'll let you do that at this time. Maybe we take like a, a two-minute break.
My, uh, my sciatica. It started, it started blaring up this weekend. It's killing me. Yeah, no bueno. Say it again. My eyes, oh no, my sciatica. My health issues.
And we're ready. Hey, Ed, Ed. Councilmember Smith. Thank you, sir. Let's go. We're going to get back. I said two minutes. I gave you like four. Well, I'm on camera. Let me look cute. Hi, Ma. I'm just messing with you. Okay, so we're going to go ahead and call the meeting back to order here. Thank you, everybody. Thank you. If you are in the middle of a conversation, I ask if you just step out of the chamber, that would be appreciated. Okay. So now we're going to go to, uh, oop, excuse me, give me one second.
Ten.
Let me make sure I'm doing this right. So we're going to go to requests from council members to agendize new matters. Um, so request to agenda as new matters are, oh. Sorry, I shouldn't ate that before I tried to start talk. I got some right here. Um, are an opportunity for council members to to just. To do just that, request items be added to a future agenda. While it may be tempting to discuss the subject matter in detail. Or the merits of council policy on the item, the question at hand is simply whether or not the topic should be agendized in the future. To keep this process efficient, the fall, the flow is as follows for each item. The requesting council member, in this case, Councilmember Rash. Delivers a verbal report no longer than three minutes, which must be consistent with her written agenda materials. Council may ask questions only relating to whether the items should be agendized. Examples, how much staff time will this take to prepare? What is the priority timeline to be assigned? Public comment will be received and can be no longer than 15 minutes in total. In deliberating the request, council should not discuss the matter itself. The only issue to be discussed. And determined is whether it's warrants being heard at a future date. Motion to agendize will pa- will pass with two yes votes. So with that, the first item, number 10, Councilmember Rash's request to agendize a discussion regarding revising the council's governance policy regarding appointments to boards, commissions and committees. Councilmember Rash. Somebody doing a timer?
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, so I'm seeking support from, um, at least one other member of the council and hopefully more. Um, to look at our governance, um, ordinance, I think we can improve it. And, um, the the value drivers would be transparency and inclusivity and actually diversity as well. Um, this was, uh. Big debated on the forums and it was of interest to the public, so I think this has the support of our public to talk about it. Um, I I would like to have a discussion on whether we should go back to the, um, model of a, um, of two. Council people being a subcommittee, that's the word I was looking for, um, so that it was, isn't just one person. And, um. This has never been a personality issue. It's a, it's an issue of having more transparency and inclusion. And I would like two people on the council at a minimum to be involved in making the nominations that go to the full council. And, um. I think, I think also, um, districting has brought up some interesting questions. Um, I I think that, um. One question. Is also how, what do we, how included do we have the public be? Should they be at the interviews? Um. I was so impressed when we, um, chose. Councilmember, um, Garcia to fill the vacancy that was public. It did take a lot of time, but I think there was a lot of gain for the community to be part of that. Um, I also think that the, um, that districting opens up a lot of opportunities about on the NCIP nominations that. That go up for nomination to the whole. Council, uh, maybe we should be looking at, should there be a districting model? Should perhaps the council member from the. That a particular district be, uh, the person who puts forth a nomination for their district like I would. I would nominate MVNA and Skyline, um, um. Dr. Barber would nominate the MCIP person from New Monterey, et cetera, et cetera. So that it would reflect a wider diversity of of what our jurisdiction wants. Um, I, it's also an opportunity to talk about term limits. I know that you're interested in. I think you're interested in term limits on the, on commissions and committees. And I think there's, um, I think there's a lot we could do to, um, involve the public and involve the council. And get a wider breadth to our council people, our committee and commissioners and NCIP reps. That's it.
Thank you, Councilmember Rash. Are there any questions from the council, please? Um, Councilmember Smith?
Uh, well, no question. I'll pass on a question.
Yes, um, I guess this would be to staff. When we talk about future agenda, agenda, agendizing in the future, what what is that when we say future, three months, six months, year?
It depends on the item. So governance is a pretty straightforward thing that can be agendized rather quickly. Uh, other items might require more time or have a different, different priority. So. Uh, governance is basically, we show you what the current governance is, and then you. Discuss and deliberate if it makes sense and where you want to make changes. So that's an item that can be come back relatively soon.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Garcia.
A question about. The, uh, I I recall, uh. A similar item coming to council. A few months back, I I wonder if. Staff might be able to provide, uh, um. Maybe like our, a range of how long ago that was. Great if you have an exact date, but, uh.
We discussed, we discussed governance the last time in, uh, January 24.
Twenty. Four or twenty-three?
Twenty-four. We'll, we'll look it up, but it was relatively, uh, in the most recent history.
Yeah, it was November 2023 is when.
Almost.
When it was adopted and discussed and. Last amended. November.
November.
November 7th.
Almost.
No, November 7, 23. 23. Um. I recall, um, discussion. Maybe it was related on a, on a related point, but it touched on this sometime last year.
May I weigh in? I believe it came up in the topic when we were making appointments. To boards and commissions.
Okay.
And I think in the context of the selections, I think there was the conversations of the governance.
Thank you, thank you. Yeah, I think that's what it was. And that was what about six months ago? Or so?
Yeah, well, whenever, whenever there was.
More than that, but.
A little more than that. All right. Okay. Just wanted to get an idea. Thank you.
Um, I I have a question for staff, um. We had our. Um, strategic planning discussion maybe three weeks ago now. Um, my assumption is that there was going to be a follow-up to that. When are we scheduled to do that follow-up discussion?
Our, our thought is, uh, we're looking for a lot of feedback.
Wow, that's weird.
That.
It's never happened.
We can bring it as early as, uh, as next month, uh, Mr. Mayor. With, with an update, we do have a summary that we've, we've developed and, uh. Uh, currently it's about prioritizing. Other items that need to go to council at our next meeting in March.
Okay. Okay, let's not have Nat talk anymore today. I'm just messing with you that. It's all out of love. All right, that's, that's my question. I'll save some comments in regards to what I think. Until after public comment. So at this point, we're going to open up to the public. Um, again, we're specifically focused on whether we agendize, not really the merits of of the issue itself. So we'll, um, I'll check in with folks online to use the raise hand function via Zoom. I'll do a countdown to five. Oh, no, sorry. Before I do a countdown, let me check in the chamber so I can give folks more time on Zoom. Um, so if you would do me a favor and stand to the left of the podium. Um, if you're in the chamber and if it's more comfortable for you to remain seated, if you could just identify yourself by raising your hand.
Mayor, you might want to say it's just on the.
It's just on this.
Governance.
The government.
It is just on the governance policy. So I just want to reiterate for the, for the, those that are wanting to speak. It's just on item 10, which is Councilmember Rash's request to agendize. A discussion regarding revising the council's governance policy regarding appointments to boards, commissions and committees. That's the specific issue. So we only have two in the chamber. All right, I'm going to do a countdown for folks on Zoom to five, four, three, two, one, and we have one person on Zoom, so we'll go ahead and start here in the chamber. With their three public speakers.
Hi, everybody. Lee Whitney from the Glenwood neighborhood, and I do serve on one of the city committees very proudly and would like to continue. But I think transparency is so important. And the diversity is so important. And like you were getting many opinions tonight from the other subject, I think we need to do that with as far as. Um, people being appointed to committees. I think we should have more than one opinion. People look at the glass half-full and half-empty, but I think we need to look at it all together. And so please agendize this item so that, um, I'd like to, to maybe suggest going back to two people. And, you know, when, when I do my next interview. Thank you.
Which I would just point out, um, you were reappointed after your interview, but thank you for sharing the public comments.
Mayor, councilman, um, city staff. Um, I think it's a great thing. I want to. First thank, uh, Councilmember Rash to bring things up and shake things up a little. Um, I do remember it was like eight months ago or something where we had the board members and all. And I think with one person leading it leads too much to sometimes an attack because they don't like the person. They don't like the decision because it's the person. Having multiple people, you know, spreads it out and gives a little more. Solid, solid selection authority to that. So, um, I think it's a great thing to review. We should always take, just because it's an old. Way of doing things doesn't mean it doesn't look for change. So I would like to see this put on the agenda. And just have a real good discussion about it and change it if it needs it. Thank you.
Thank you. And we'll take it to our speaker online. I think we have Mr. Reeves.
Yes, we do. Go ahead, Tom.
Good evening, everybody. Uh, I am very much in favor of, uh, Councilmember Ash's request, uh, for this item as well as the other three items that she has. So I won't speak to the other three. I'm in support of them. Um, what I find a bit burdensome and clumsy is what you're going through just to get something on the agenda though, too. I think there's, maybe there's a more efficient way that you can go about deciding what. Should go on to an agenda between yourselves. Rather than having to have a, you know, a 10-minute conversation over whether or not you should have something on the agenda. But anyhow, uh, cut it short and just say I'm, I'm very much in favor of her request. Thank you.
Okay, with that, we'll go ahead and close public comment and to Mr. Reeves's, uh, final point there. When I got on to the council, there wasn't a process in place to put anything on the agenda. And it's always felt a little bit wonky of a process and and how we've established this. I've had conversations with staff, um, other colleagues on the council over the years about this. Um. And, and I, since I have the mic, I I will just point out that I'm not opposed to any of these items. I think my concern is. By us saying we're going to move forward with these exclusively. It. I think, um, prevents. The rest of the council from. Collectively, everybody on the council from having a discussion in regards to how do we set the priority over the next. Two years. Based off of the discussion that we had, um, at the strategic planning discussion, which is why I asked that question. Um, and so I think that these are in alignment with what you brought up during the strategic planning discussion. And I, and my hope is that if we could. Hold off on talking about a timeline until we have that discussion come back so that we can talk about. All the issues that we collectively addressed on the council, um, in, in, in one seating. Um, I think it could better help align. I'm not opposed to these things moving forward. I just think as far as timeframe, I think it needs to be discussed with everybody's, um. Um, issues, uh, uh, the issues that the rest of the council wants to address as well, or. Or I think we're. Making it a more wonky process. Base, basing priority off of anytime somebody puts something on the agenda. So anyways, I'll leave my comments there. Councilmember Smith?
I don't want to cut off the discussion, but I want to make a motion if the council feels like they're ready. A motion in support. Okay, I'll, I'll wait for discussions to be done.
And, and so that's, that's my, um, question, too. I think I had even emailed about. Uh, when the actual spectrum that we did during study session, because it's kind of like, well, if we did a study session of what we're going to focus on. For 2025, that doesn't mean emergencies and different things wouldn't. Pop on there like we did tonight. That doesn't mean the emergencies, but I'm saying if we took time to do a study session of saying what we're going to look at. For 2025 and we all did a spectrum, and that's why I, I emailed about this even earlier than this. To find out what that was. Then I think. That should mean something. If not, then why have a study session?
Anybody else? Okay, so back to you.
Uh, yes, I would like to give a little explanation, uh, before I express it. I want to make the motion. Or you make the motion and I'll make the second that we do move forward. But my discussion point on that is that. I think it's, um, it's a good business practice and it's been unresolved. Um, I think that the governance, uh, policy as it currently stands has had some conflict points, and I think it's, it's more. Um, urgent that we do that rather than waiting to try and fit it in with something else. I think. That's really the, the meat of the matter is it should be first. Um, I think it's balancing when you have, uh, a process, and I think it is. Uh, leaning towards transparency. Um, I think it's just good business practices that. The council knows exactly how we get, uh, something on the agenda and the governance affairs. Policy that we have, uh, two members of this council have not yet touched that. That was a previous, um. Actually, I think three. The governance policy was a rollover that we had that predated. Uh, Councilmember Rash, Councilmember, uh, Garcia and and Councilmember Barber. So. I think it's time, and I don't think it would take that long to be able to, uh, to get to it. As the city manager expressed, they. Give us the copy of the current one and then we would have a agendized item and then we would, we would get into it and sort of add, add to what we think that the governance. Um, policy should include. So for that, those reasons, um. I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
So I, um. I'm trying to. Piece through this and I don't know, I'm, I'm open to staff engaging on this conversation as well as about how best to do this. I. I'm not opposed to having this discussion. Um, I actually welcome it. Um, the, the concern that I have is still exists though, and so as far as timeline. Um, usually what we're supposed to do during this discussion is also look at, at timeframe as well, and that hasn't really been discussed. So it's kind of just floating out there. And so. I guess maybe I can try to make an attempt at a friendly amendment and say. Um, supporting the motion, but leaving the discussion around the timeline. supporting the motion, but leaving the discussion around the timeline for this and frankly, the other items to our next council meeting when we are agendize a review of staff of the council's strategic priorities.
I would reject, uh, a change in the, uh, motion because I think that it's not that complicated or long for, uh, staff to be able to put it on the agenda. And I'm not saying it has to be on the agenda for the next two weeks. I'm saying that if we've got things in the queue, then they obviously should probably stay. But I think that this has a cer- a certain, uh, urgency because we have, uh, commissions, boards, uh, appointments. They come in all the time. I think we're better off to have a resolved governance policy. And this is, uh, two council members that it are in concurrence to have it placed on a future agenda. So I just don't want to wait for, you know, three months.
Dr. Barber.
So yeah, I, I'm not against, uh, uh, doing it. I think this is important. But I guess my question would be some of the things that you talked about, uh, Jean, uh, uh, Councilmember Rosh, during the study session, was this one of them?
Um, I could tell you on the spot.
It, it, it was, I.
Yeah, I think it was mentioned.
So that's, so if it's one of them, they should be coming back to us anyway, right? When you guys do the summary, am I, am I correct, Nat?
Yes, we can, we can come back. You know, the intent of the summary, I think, is more to provide some guidance more broadly on what the priorities are, not necessarily assigning each task a specific date of when it would come back to council, but, um, it's I think there's, there's flexibility there.
The council could select some level of prioritization.
Potentially. Historically, when items have gone to council for a request to agendize, it's, uh, it's known that, uh, staff will bring it as soon as possible, but based on needs. So if it's an item that we know is going to take five to six months, it'll come back in five to six months. If it's, it's usually council has been flexible with staff based on our resources and the other priorities that are taking place in the organization.
Okay, so I, um, to me, it's, it's a, it's a procedural question, not a whether or not we should do it question. So I'm going to make a substitute motion that we support the, uh, the, the agenda item, um, contingent on as far as timeline contingent on the discussions that the council has as, uh, during the follow up strategic planning discussion.
I'll second that.
Okay. Any other, just, any other discussion?
Well, I'm wondering, would you be able to support it if we, um, and I don't really want to box staff in, but if we did it within the next five months?
I, I, again, I think we could, we could ask that question for all the things. And I really would love to, I would really love to see the analysis that staff comes out with in regards to all the things that we've identified. I think it's reasonable to say next five months, but I wouldn't want to tie that to it unless we have that discussion, looking at all the things that the council has talked about.
But to change it now, other than the standard way that Nat described is to kind of disenfranchise the whole idea of agendizing. Now, I'm a rookie. You know, this is my first time asking for an agenda item, but now I'm kind of hearing, oh, you know, we don't, we don't really mean that we have a process for agendizing. So a little discomfort there.
I'm not saying the, the distinction that I'm trying to make is that it sounds like we literally have a follow up discussion for an item that you raised during our strategic planning meeting. And I really just want to make sure personally that we have a discussion in totality. Otherwise, I can start requesting things to be agendized. Assuming we didn't have a council meeting coming up next, right? Like I, I would have started agendizing things right away, but I knew that there was this process. And in fact, not to air all of our conversations, right? But you, you reached out to me a, about this and, and I suggested to bring it up during the strategic planning discussion. For this very reason, so that we can have that conversation as a council about how we move forward. I, I have no effort in trying to slow your, slow the role of your priorities. I, I've already articulated, I want to address this issue. I think it's an important thing. I recognize that it's important for you. Actually, I welcome it and, and I look forward to having the discussion. I just want to make sure that we have at, at this point, because it's such, it's so timely for us to be discussing at the next council meeting. I think it's, it's a good time to just kind of defer the discussion around timeframe until we look at everything in totality.
So can I, can I add a perspective here? We probably would have been able to resolve the governance policy within the timeframe that we've been talking about, putting it on the agenda to talk about it. But for me, I don't want to see another selection of a board or commissioner that does not have an opportunity for us to be able to discuss how that interview is going to happen. Because as we've had a hundred percent of our speakers tonight have weighed in on the transparency and the balance where, and we've heard a lot of it in the campaign and the conversations that the interviews for those selections, there is a different model. And I think I don't want to see a process come up when we've got expiring appointments and we haven't resolved that yet. I don't want to wait five months. I'd be okay to wait a month and a half or two months, but I think it's not going to take that much time. And if we try and bundle it with the strategic planning, I don't think there's a meeting that we can have to prioritize the strategic planning ideas that we identified in one session of the council. What we're talking about is handling something that's business practices, perfunctory and relatively easy to dismiss with, with probably a 45 minute conversation with the council. Those others in the strategic planning, I do look forward to hearing from all of you on your priorities, but I think that's going to take a lot more time. And staff's going to have to have more time to prepare that for us so that we're all ready to really get into those priorities. But I, I don't want to conflate the two. I think the governance policy is something that could be dealt with relatively sooner. And everything else I think could come in at the same time. So I, I just don't want to wait.
I mean, I could agree to ask staff to hold off on announcing any vacancies between now and the next time that this item comes up. So when we discuss this strategic planning discussion, so that way we're not jumping to anything before we get around to having this follow up conversation. And it gets to the point that, the very point that you made just now. So.
So I, I appreciate the, the thought to try and you know, let's, let's, uh, delay a normal process so that we can allow more time to do something that is unresolved, that should be resolved. It, it just seems like we don't need to protract it. Let's just get to the business of putting on in the agenda in the next, uh, you know, month and a half, two months, or maybe it's three months. But I don't think we want to have a motion tied to a date. I think staff is smart enough to figure out when they can find the time to bring this to us.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I hear what you're saying about timeframes, but, um, there are certain laws that have to do with how soon we have to notice a vacancy after we know about it. So we would not be able to go past those deadlines.
Okay, but could we at least have a vacancy open long enough to get through the next council? I mean, I'm assuming like, let's say a vacancy happens tomorrow. Between the time that you have it open and the time that it closes, I'm assuming wouldn't be before next.
My limitation is on the noticing of it. So I guess you could take as long as you needed to, to make appointments.
Perfect. Okay, perfect. And then Councilwoman Garcia.
I, I just wanted to add maybe a, a little bit of a different take, uh, just based, I guess, on, on the amount of time that I've been in this role. And, and it goes to, to the reason why I asked the question earlier about when was the last time we covered this point? So from, uh, the responses, it sounds like we covered this point, uh, last year. And then we also covered this point the year before. So there has been discussion. I don't necessarily know that this item is unresolved. So for that reason, I was leaning more towards, all right, well, I mean, it feels like there has been discussion that there has been input, there has been, um, interaction from the public about this. You know, there are differences of opinions and, um, I don't know that the process will always, or, or we're, will at any point yield a hundred percent agreement, right? So I, I think at the moment it feels like to the extent of how these elections happen, there is somewhat of a, of a majority agreement at least. So that's how I was looking at, at this item. And, um, I personally, I was not going to support, uh, moving it forward. But I think it's a reasonable compromise as, uh, Mayor Williamson, Williamson is stating it. So I can support that.
All right, I'm going to go ahead and call the question because we have three more items to get to tonight. We have to finish by seven o'clock. All right. All those in favor? Oh, sorry. Let me just reiterate. There's a, there's a substitute motion on the table to support item number 10, but leaving the discussion around timeframe for discussion to the next council meeting when we discuss the strategic planning.
I have a point of clarification.
Yeah.
It was portrayed to me that this is the process for asking for agendized items. And that two votes would proceed it to a discussion. And, and that's what I'm calling for. Like, we aren't going to, I disagree with changing the procedure here at the dais. Before us is, do we have two votes to proceed with the discussion? Under the ways we've been doing it, and that's what should be called for. We, you know, when it comes up for discussion, if, if you want to, if anyone has their opinions, that's when we discuss the factors in front of us about the topic.
So Councilmember Rash.
Yes.
I'm support, the motion is to support it. So we, we're voting on getting this agendized. Part of the process is discussing timeframe. So I'm just asking that we wait to the next council meeting when we're discussing all of the initiatives that this council is wishing to do, um, until the next council meeting.
And, and I'm asking, has that been part of the process for agendizing? And it has not been.
Point of order.
So, so we're, we're, we're changing the procedure midstream. You know, I'm a stickler for procedure. I, I would appreciate it going according to the way we've been doing it. I trust staff. Agendize it when you can.
And point of order. We currently have a governance policy. In keeping of following that governance policy, Jean is exactly right. Two council members vote to push it forward to have it come back as an agenda, an agendized item. She's followed the procedures. There's two votes for it. That's the current point of order of the governance affair. I mean, the, the policy spells it out. So we, we shouldn't be deviating from that policy.
Okay, but there's an emotion on the table. I'm calling the question.
And my point, my point of order.
I'm just clarifying that this is the last comment and then we're going to move to the vote.
Point of order chumps that. I go to the attorney and ask her, is this vote that you're proceeding with even a legal vote? Because we have a policy, it's the governance policy that spells out the procedure to advance. And you're trying to circumvent that with a different kind of a vote.
Anything, but let's go to the attorney.
Let's go to the attorney.
Go to the attorney.
Cause I believe it's a point of order that's incorrect.
The policy, item number four says in deliberating the request, the sole issue to be determined is whether the substantive issue warrants being heard at a future date. Majority vote is not required. Instead, the motion will pass with two yes votes. So that's the, um, sole issue for the policy.
Okay, but when we established the policy, one of the things that we discussed was determining timeframe when these items come back in collaboration with staff. So.
That wasn't part of the motion though.
It, it is.
No, it's your motion. Our motion, her mo-, or my motion or her second is not considering the timeframe. You're trying to propose an alternative motion.
The, the policy does not require a time to be in connection with the motion. Doesn't prohibit it, but it doesn't require it.
Okay, so I can't, so I can't make my motion? Is that what you're saying?
Your motion included a timeframe?
Of discussing the timeframe at the strategic planning meeting.
That does seem like it's adding a criteria that's not in that bullet point number four. Right. Right.
I clearly remember this being a point of the policy when we established it.
It, and it is in the policy. It says that should be.
Bringing it up because I, every time that I put something on the agenda, I've made it clear that we needed to discuss a timeframe. So that was part of the process and we had to do that in collaboration with staff.
So the, the policy set forth in the resolution just touches on the fact that the council member who submitted the request will deliver a verbal report and it will not exceed three minutes. The council may ask questions pertaining to whether the item should be agendized, e.g., for example, the required amount of staff time, the priority level to be assigned to the item, et cetera. Public comment will be received. And in deliberating the request, the sole issue is whether the substantive issue warrants being heard at a future date. So it doesn't say and a date will be specified.
Okay, so I think what I'm going to do is, um, ask that we work with staff. I, I'll withdraw my motion. I'll ask that we work with staff on clarifying timeframes at the strategic planning discussion so that we have this discussion collectively as a council and that we're not just leaving it to staff to decide when things should be prioritized. I'm just going to ask staff to, to respect that. And we have that conversation when we get to the council, when we get to the next council meeting. So I withdraw my motion. We're back to your motion. I'm going to go ahead and call for the vote. All those in favor?
Hi.
All those oppose? No. All right, motion passes. Item number 11, Councilmember Rash's request to agendize a, a discussion regarding tree management. And can we do the time?
Sure. I won't take three minutes. Um, you know, this is coinciding with the, the town hall and all the discussions about fire protection. And, uh, the main complaint or concern I'm hearing from the public. And remember, I just canvassed all of Skyline and Monterey Vista is how do we abide by a five foot perimeter clearance, which is recommended by the fire department when we have some conflicting ordinances through our tree ordinance. So it would just be an opportunity. Of course, it'll follow af- after the town hall and when our experts have spoken, it'll be an opportunity to have a public discussion on how do we reorganize our approach to tree maintenance and removal and pruning so that it all can coalesce into a cohesive bundle.
Okay, any questions? All right, open up for public comment. So ask folks on Zoom to use the raise hand function. In the meantime, I'll check with the chamber. Anybody in the chamber who should speak on this item? I'm seeing three folks. Anybody else in the chamber other than these three folks that are standing? All right, I'm going to do a countdown on Zoom to five, four, three, two, one. We have three folks on Zoom. I'm going to leave it to two minutes. So please start in the chamber.
Hi, again, I'm Erica Walker. Um, I've lived here all my life and I've lived uh, up in the skyline area specifically. And one of my biggest concerns that I've actually brought up for many, many years, um, it goes back to the water. Uh, when the water rates, like I said, I've done property management for over 26 years. I was around when, you know, water was 20, $20 a month. As the water rates are now for that $20, it's, it's an average, I think, 180 for the same amount of usage. I've watched the neighborhoods that used to be green be completely dry. When I would drive from my house to my sister, because we live a couple of minutes apart and she's over on Grove, I realized, you know, this water situation, and this is over 15 years ago that I'm, I'm addressing this and brought up these concerns. I was like one match and everything's like a tinderbox. People aren't maintaining because now their lawns are dead. The trees have that Spanish moss that grows all over them. Back when they were protesting about the way that they were do, going after the brown, uh, moths and they were spraying, uh, without any sort of kind of public comment. So I, I was there for all of that. So, um, I've watched these areas and it's very concerning. And I think it would be very important for you guys to maybe reach out to people who've lived here a long time and look at the pictures in the neighborhoods of what they used to be. I don't know if it's necessarily a complete tree issue. I don't know how you can force certain people to maintain different things with trees. I do. But the biggest concern that I see is water and, and, and the rates that the people that are, that are being charged here are astronomical compared to what they used to be. Because like I said, I just, I have over 26 years of tracking it because that was, that's my job and I still do it today. And they used to take into account a head, a head count over at Cal-Am. So the family of one door now pays the same as a family that may have five children and that used to be considered a fact. And so they used to have a different ratio. So people don't have the funds for those things anymore. And it's, and it's putting it at a disadvantaged where it's becoming a safety issue. It, it, it's a very big issue for here. Yeah.
Lee Whitney from the Grant, Glenwood neighborhood. Um, this is a no brainer, guys. Looking at the trees. This is a no-brainer, guys, looking at the trees. Because if we don't start doing managing and doing it properly now, we're behind the eight ball already. Look at the fires down in LA because nothing's been done. I think it's up to the city to agendize, to look at this as far as managing the city trees. I don't advocate cutting them all down or, you know, planting thousands more. Look at them and what do we need to do to manage to protect our city from fire? I got a good kudos to the fire department. J.D. Sheldon and Valdez, Jennifer Valdez. They have done an outstanding job coming up in my neighborhood. I had a triple property that hadn't been done for since 2010. They contacted those owners down south. $30,000 job. My tree guy put in a bid. He got the job and he did a marvelous job. But I'm worried about what's going to happen with my neighbor that won't do a doggone thing. And two of them have fallen on two of my buildings. But I think we need to get into this, guys. Start it now. Don't wait. Carmel's getting on the ball, and we know what trees fall in those houses. Let's keep our city safe. Let's manage our trees properly because you've got a great forestry staff. Thank you.
Pat Benson, Monterey. My concern is that I'm hearing two issues. The fire department says we need to have a five-foot area around our house with no foliage, no trees. And then you call the arborist, and you have a very healthy tree next to your house, and you can't cut it down. So I'm hoping that with this study, we come up with the two departments talking together that the the regulations go. And of course, then we're going to add in what's really happening, who's really the driver, and that's the insurance companies coming in and saying, oh, no, we want it 10 feet away. So somehow we need to do the best we can within our city, knowing that we still have these outside forces that are even going to be stronger. Thank you.
Okay, we'll take it to our callers online.
Tom, go ahead.
Sorry, I said I wasn't going to talk again, but I just couldn't resist this one. We're going to be having a, first of all, yes, please agendize it to address the agenda item. And I just a reminder that there's going to be a symposium, for lack of better terms, coming up. And staff can refresh my memory. I forget if it's in March. But anyhow, there's going to be a wildfire-safe Monterey or something like that coming up. And so I don't want to step in that mud puddle that you just had of discussing when this should happen. But I think it should probably be after that symposium because I think you're going to get a whole bunch of input after that. Thank you.
Next is, I believe this is Ms. Beatty.
Yes, this is Nina Beatty. I just wanted to also say, I think that city council members should be able to put items on the agenda throughout the year as issues arise without an in-between meeting such as tonight. I know this has happened at county board meetings in other counties where they can put items on the agenda even up to a few days before the meeting. And sometimes things happen. And also, that's what we elected you for, is to make decisions about things coming before the city. City management and decision-making over Monterey trees have had problems. There are stressors affecting trees that have been ignored, and perfectly healthy trees are being killed. People are stressing trees or harming them with inappropriate trimming measures, and that has not been addressed. A beautiful old oak tree by the Big Sur Land Trust building is no more because it was first poodle-cutted, and then the tree couldn't survive with that little amount of foliage, and it died. Some of the city's approach is kill now and talk about it later. Why would anyone cut down a healthy tree? I that this has become an urgent matter. It impacts Monterey's incredible native residents. And it's already degrading Monterey's appearance and vitality. Every time I go downtown, it seems like, I think, why is there more sun coming through? Oh, there must be a tree that's gone now in this area. I'm also seeing that some experts are speaking, but others are not speaking at events like the upcoming meeting before the city. We don't have biologists. We don't have wildlife organizations. We don't have people that are very educated on trees. Relushing the forest is what's really needed because some of the measures being taken now by Cal Fire are actually increasing wind. And as we know from the LA fires, wind was an enormous issue in those fires happening and spreading. But now we have tunnels and and gaps in trees that we didn't before. This is an urgent item, and I hope that you will take it up without any, as far as evaluating this. Thank you.
And lastly, Adam.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is Adam Pinteritz. I represent the Monterey County Association of Realtors, and I just want to express appreciation and and support for putting this on the agenda. We thank you for raising this because it's becoming one of the number one issues for residents, not just of Monterey, but of all of California. The insurance rates don't affect just property owners. They affect renters too, as, you know, the cost of insurance is factored into the rent. So really, this affects everyone, and we can do more to mitigate this. I think it's important that we address the conflicts in state and local policy, which other commenters have mentioned. Lastly, I'll just clear up something that was said much earlier in the meeting that that is is simply not consistent with the facts that several fire chiefs have told me. And that is that if you remove native trees, that that more invasive plants or weeds will will create an even greater fuel danger. That simply doesn't make sense because every fire chief has always told me when the fire goes up is when it really spreads worse, right? When it gets up into the canopy, when it's getting up into roofs, that's when you get a real widespread problem. So we really, really must address the city's trees and fuel management ordinance. No one's talking about cutting them all down. Of course, they're part of what make our town, our city beautiful. But we need to consider what's responsible and what's safe for our for our entire community. Thank you.
Okay, so that closed public comment, I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
All right, any other discussion? All right, so I I I'm just going to say, I clearly have concern around the process, and I was going to save this to the council comments at the end. But I think clearly we need to clean up the process and how this works a little bit so we can find something that functions better. I don't know if we can find other models in 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 other places. And I just want to reiterate, had no concern in regards to what's being proposed. And has, it's nothing personal against you, Councilmember Rash. I just want to make sure that we get through the discussion next week. All that being said, I want to get us through this council meeting so we can get to closed session. So any other discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion passes. With that, we'll move to item number 13. 12, 12, thank you. Councilmember Rash's request to agenda as a discussion regarding instituting a no-smoking policy in multi-unit buildings.
Okay.
And we'll start the timer.
Thank you. I was approached by residents in Glenwood who live in a multi-family development, and they have a common air source. So they don't have access to their own fresh air. And they petitioned me, asked me to represent them in this issue. And they have a number of signatures. And it would be a discussion about whether we can ban indoor smoking in multi-family units, developments. And I I personally look forward to the discussion. I it's the health aspects versus, you know, independence of individual condominium owners. And I I I understand what the discussion will be. But I think we should hear out our residents and help them, if we can, to be as healthy as possible with still respecting individual rights. So I look forward to the discussion. Thank you.
Okay, any questions in the council? I will open up for public comment. Anybody on Zoom, use the raise hand function. We'll go ahead and check in the chamber if anybody wants to speak on this item. All right, I'm seeing two in the chamber. Anybody else? All right, so we'll close it off in the chamber. We'll check online. I'll do a countdown to five, four, three, two, one. We have one person online. We'll go ahead and start in the chamber.
City Council. Good evening. My name is Madalorn, and I am a Monterey resident since 1982, and I've lived in Glenwood Circle since 1989. I am here to support our neighborhood petition for an indoor smoking ban in multi-unit residential buildings, which we have submitted earlier. It's important that it says indoor smoking ban because common areas have already been banned smoking in those areas. The we problem we have with secondhand smoke infiltration that is unstoppable, and this happens to all the people who are living in this kind of building, is indoor smoking. Indoor smoking. When we are inside, we get all this infiltration that comes through the wall, through the air ducts. We share the air we breathe, and we can't avoid it. Most of my neighbors in 500 Glenwood Circle who signed the petition still work. So they couldn't be here today, and many study. So I stand here for them and for myself. We urge the city council to seriously consider this petition. Secondhand smoke infiltration is an ongoing and a serious health hazard. I thank you deeply for all the work you do for our city. Secondhand smoke kills. There is no safe level of exposure. Thank you. I promise.
Lee Whitney from the Glenwood. My property butts up next to her property, and they were built at the same time by the same contractor. Unfortunately, did not use the same game plan. So on their property, the condos share the common breathing area. On my property, it's all, all the con, the condos have their separate air vents and stuff. It's not commingled like there. Both of the properties have smoking areas. In fact, they butt up to each other. No trees around. And I think on our, on our property, it's divided. There's half rentals because the the development never was completed, that was started in 2007 to make the entire property condominiums. The rental property in the front does not allow smoking at all in their units. And the condominium size allows smoking on your deck or your patio or in your unit. But like I say, we don't share that common breathing, the vent areas and stuff. The entire property, there is no smoking on the common areas at all, except in those smoking designated smoking on their side and our side over there. So I think it's something that you you need to consider, taking the, how these things are built and how it could be applied. And these are private properties also. So we did in the past have a situation with a smoker, and we were able to work with that person and with the neighbor next door. And the HOA did some things, and the two owners did some things, and it came out to be amicable. So maybe it's a matter of their internal stuff coming together and sitting, sitting down, see what things could happen. But these buildings were built different, but they are vents. Thank you. That's it, I promise.
All right, we'll take it online.
Esther, you can go ahead.
Hi, again. Yeah, I'd like to to see this brought, get some attention. I am, obviously, as you all know, a renter, and I have asthma. And, you know, right now, I'm lucky enough to live in a house. But I'm 100% sure that the next place I live is not going to be a house, and I'm very concerned. We have, you know, an aging population, and more and more people are living in condos and multi-units. And I think it's important for the health of of the city, for everybody, to to go along with the ban on smoking that we have in restaurants and in retail locations and general and public. And I don't think that, you know, somebody having the habit that is dangerous to other people should circumvent their right supposedly to pollute their own bodies with whatever they're deciding to smoke. And frankly, I think with marijuana, it's the same thing. If somebody is sharing airspace and somebody lives in one of those units that their air is going to be compromised, if they go for and apply for a job and they are drug tested, they can absolutely show up as having marijuana inhalation, and it wasn't by their own doing. So I'm not going to say much more, other than I 100% support this. Thank you.
Okay, with that, we'll go ahead and close public comment. Bring it back to the council. I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve.
Second.
Any other discussion?
Actually hers.
She's all good. Any other discussion? All right, all those in favor? Aye, any opposed? Motion passes. Moving on to item 13, Councilmember Rash's request to agenda as a discussion regarding Skyline Drive Route 68 interchange safety issues.
So we did this with Alan.
Sorry, I was just trying to get Nat's attention for the timer. Yep, yep, thank you.
So this began with Councilmember Hoffa. And frankly, I don't know where it left off, but I thought it was going to be agendized. And I represent Skyline, and Skyline is really hot to trot on this one. And they think they think it's a safety issue, and they want to study or they want some discussion about whether a study is in order. And I think we we owe them some kind of guidance on whether we can provide a study or can we encourage Caltrans to evaluate whether they can do a study. I would like to see some closure on the discussion for the benefit of the the people at Skyline, some of whom have been injured. So when they stood up and told me all about their injuries, I had a tough time with it.
All right, and thank you, Councilmember Rash. Any questions?
I think, and I think the staff's going to have some updates too. So I don't know if you want to do that after we go to the public or before.
The staff?
Yeah, so so we have progressed. We have the, we had an RFP issued based on that. We have a response back, and we are getting the funding in place to proceed with that study with a new budget, and it will be done by the end of this year. And I think that was the guidance that council gave us at that time when they said they want us to work on it immediately. And we started working on it immediately. And the folks that were here in the room, Robin Dometer and another lady, they are fully involved, understanding that we went forward. We scoped it out. We put the RFP out. We got a, the contract is awarded to Kimley Horn, I believe, or is it Kimley Horn? Yeah, through our on-call, which is Kimley Horn. And again, we we put the money into the future budget so that we have a ready.
So we don't even need a motion?
No.
Okay, fine. I re, I.
Withdraw request.
Withdraw the request.
We needed to go to public comment. All right, so we'll open this up for public comment. Anybody in the chamber? Anybody online? Use the raise hand function on Zoom. I'm not seeing anybody in the room, so I'll do a countdown for Zoomers to five, four. It's like a, it's like a generation, future generational term, Zoomers. Sorry, okay, I'm sorry, I'm going down my own rabbit hole.
He needs food.
There's something. All right, I'll do a countdown for five, four, three, two, one. And we have nobody online, so we'll go ahead and bring it back to the council and go to council comments.
I'll pass.
Anybody, any takers? All right, city manager reports.
For my friend, Tom Reeves, if you're still watching Zoom, the wildfire-ready Monterey Town Hall meeting is on February 27, and it will start at 5:00 and it will end at 8:30. We have put together a panel that will address the the topic at hand, wildfire, and what we can do. And we also will have a vendor show there where folks from the trades will present what kind of building materials you can use. And then we have a break. We have breakout sessions where our defensible space inspector will talk about how to create defensible space communities or neighborhoods. And we also have the, a member of our tree team to talk about what actually the the ordinance allows to do and and where where you can create defensible space through tree management as well. So this will all take place next week on Thursday. From 5:00 to 8:30, we also will provide for the folks there. from 5 to 8:30. We also will provide for the folks their pizza and and some non alcoholic drinks so they they can enjoy the evening there. Also, on March 6, and I know council is interested in that and that's why I bring this up. There is the next public outreach meeting about the local road safety plan. So then it's March 6, from 6 to 8 o'clock in the library community room. Local road safety plan, March 6, 6 to 8 o'clock in the in the evening in the library community room. That's all.
Hey, I don't know how I got on my calendar, but it's already there. So thank you for that. And I I just want to follow up and just encourage the council to be there because it's a really good time to get some feedback ahead of time before staff brings it back to the council agenda. Okay. And with that, we were we're going to be going into closed session. We have one closed session item, so I'm opening it up for public comments on that item. It's public employee performance evaluation, title, city manager. Public employee performance evaluation pursuant to government code section 84957B1. Conference with labor negotiator pursuant to government code section 54957, tax six for labor negotiations. Agency negotiator, Shaleen Bennett, unrepresented employee, city manager, continued from February 4, 2025 meeting. And I'm checking in the chamber. I see one in the chamber. Anybody else? I'll check in the on Zoom for folks to use the raise hand function. I will do a countdown to five, four, three, two, one. And there's nobody on Zoom, so we'll open it up to the chamber.
Hi, my name is Shay. I'm the GEM chairman for the public employees of Monterey. I wrote a speech which I don't really want to read, but I want to highlight a few things about GEM's relationship with management. It pretty much doesn't exist anymore. One of the first times I came and spoke with you guys, I talked about a word I discovered called sophistry, the use of fallacious arguments, especially with the intention of deceiving. This historically has been management's attitude when dealing with GEM. Things have not changed. I think management is more emboldened. We've had a situation where we've had a perp charge and we've had managers basically state that we don't follow any rules or regulations regarding promotional opportunities. We don't care about minimum qualifications. We just do what we want. You know, we bring these things up to management. They don't seem to care. And we have to basically file a perp charge to expose these things. And once we expose them, you know, they just double down with the denial. I don't know how many times they can violate the MOU, the Miles Mills Brown Act. We have employees have been retaliated in writing for their union protected activity. And HR basically states, you know, as long as, I mean, what's the quote from our HR director? Even if it was true, it doesn't violate any city city rules. Well, violates the law and the Miles Mills Mills Brown Act is the law. But I guess, you know, basic logic just goes right over their head. And, you know, I used to say that word, you know, sophistry. Now it's I don't think they really care to deny it anymore. And we have no relationship with management anymore. None. None with HR. It's at least I'm not talking to benefits and and MK. People are very happy with MK. But we have nowhere to go anymore. We have nothing. I don't really want to come up here and speak on this anymore. I know I've spoken to a lot of you individually. There's still a few individuals I'd like to speak with. It's the same problems. They double down on it, but we still don't get meet and confer items. Maybe when they want to talk to us about extending a contract that they didn't tell us about the first time around. And then we try to come up with some compromise like, oh, why don't we, instead of contracting all the firework out? Why don't we, you know, incentivize some of our own firefighters? And then they double down and say, well, why don't we just not have our own mechanics work on any of the fire apparatus? We'll contract it all out. And like, to what extent? Even in emergency, even in emergency, even if there's a fire downtown Monterey, we will not have our own people come down and fix on it if 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 they're able and we'll just hire a contractor. This is not just a public relations issue with the GEM unit. This is a citizens of Monterey issue for a functional government. Thank you.
Thank you, Shay. All right, with that, we'll go ahead and close public comment and we're going to adjourn to closed session. Thank you.